Well, good afternoon. If I can get everyone to start heading towards your seat, please. I think we finally got all our audio/video ready and worked out all the kinks. Welcome to our first meeting in the new City Hall building. Thank you for attending. We greatly appreciate everyone for being here. I'm going to officially call us to order here today. We've got a good meeting planned. We'll get some city business done. We'll honor some people in our community. But we'll start off with an invocation by Dr. Howie Batson, if you don't mind coming forward. Will everyone please rise?
Oh God, we are blessed people. What a historic day in a historic city. We pray for your blessings upon this city. Father, I pray for all those who serve this city, whether in elected position or those who serve as part of our employee of human resources. They serve so tirelessly, so faithful. Father, seldom do they hear "well done," but today we say "well done." Thank you for this beautiful city. May folks who enter this building leave saying, "Things are going good," Amarillo, Texas. And Father, even when we're not one in ideas, may we always be one in spirit. May we live our lives and interact with each other in a way that the fruit of the Spirit is displayed in who we are, what we say, and what we do. Love, joy, goodness, kindness, patience, gentleness, and self-control. Father, thank you for those who had the vision to make this possible, for those who worked tirelessly to make this dream become a reality. We are grateful to them. And so many of us will use this building and be served by the people therein and never realize the efforts and the energy that took place, the dreams that were dreamt, and the visions that were cast. Bless us, Lord. Bless our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you guys have remained standing, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll do the Texas flag as well.
(Inaudible) Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. All right. How about the audio in here? Where is James Skank? There he is. We did all this just for you, Jimmy Joe. Ms. City Secretary, would you mind to let us know if we have any announcements to make today?
We do not have any announcements, Mayor.
Okay. Moving us right along, that'll bring us to item number six, which is public comment. We appreciate everyone who would like to address the council, as well as your fellow citizens here today. Ms. City Secretary, do you mind to take us into that?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's City Council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address the City Council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound to alert you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted today. We have one public hearing today. If you're here to speak on that public hearing, we would ask that you speak either during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate minutes. It's your decision at which time you'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name, whether or not you live within this Amarillo City limit. If you are speaking to an item not on today's agenda, we just want to remind you Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. Council may respond with a statement of fact. They may ask that the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the item to staff to help you. Again, thank you for being here today. We do have two podiums in this new council chamber, and so what we'll do is we'll invite our first speaker up, and then while they're speaking, we'll invite the next speaker on deck to go ahead and come to the other podium. Our first speaker today is Teresa Kennedy. And on deck after Ms. Kennedy will be James Allen, if you'd like to use the other podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to go ahead and let Quentin be my speaker for today. Quentin Marquez. We both serve on the Bario Neighborhood Planning Committee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Good afternoon, sir.
Quentin Marquez, resident of Amarillo in Potter County. On the behalf of the Bario Neighborhood Planning Committee, I'd like to express our support for the Wuda Cooper organization as they develop the Tucavas Terrace Affordable Housing Project. I would like to mention that Wuda Cooper engaged with several organizations that have shown their support, including the BNPC, Amarillo National Bank, City Federal Credit Union, Amarillo Housing First, and the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I would also like to emphasize the location of the development with its proximity to Glenwood Park, East Amarillo Public Library, and Glenwood Elementary School. These properties are minutes away from Ross and I-40 so that the residents are able to get to where they need to be day-to-day. After speaking with some of the representatives of Wuda Cooper and our president, Teresa Kennedy, it is worth mentioning the focus that both organizations have of doing away with the reputation associated with Glenwood Apartments as being a higher crime development. According to the Amarillo Police Department crime data, every crime listed is with a single digit for the year. We believe that this proves that there is a misconception that this area is too dangerous for new residents to move to and that current residents are not being able to be kept safe. Even with these impressive numbers, Wuda Cooper has assured us that safety is a top priority of theirs. Lastly, I would like to mention that this development does align with the BNPC's mission to revitalize the Bario neighborhood and that this development would align with some of the goals stated in the plan, which includes a plan for adequate and diverse supply of housing for all income levels, pursue a complete inventory of life-cycle housing to keep residents in the neighborhood in every stage of life. The BNPC has been working hard to get some big projects completed in the Bario, and it feels great to help the businesses in areas currently. We think that it's great to see new businesses come to our area for a better future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be James Allen, and on deck Claudia Stravato, if you'd like to make your way up.
Good afternoon. First of all, my prayers are with Councilman Sherlin. I would like to agree with the pastor that Amarillo's a beautiful place, but I can't agree with him because we have a problem with illegal dumping. I would like to bring your attention back to the core services that the City of Amarillo should have as a top priority. Take a look at the poster that I brought to you. Illegal dumping has grown to epidemic levels in our city, especially in our minority communities like North Heights. Volunteer groups routinely do neighborhood cleanups, but that is a futile effort without a strong partnership with city government. There is a city ordinance in place to address illegal dumping when the perpetrator is identified. The City Fire Marshal and the Amarillo Police Department has tools to help the community fight this scourge of dumping in our communities, but must apply the law equally to all people. Instead, I personally, on February the 14th, caught Jan Newton of 410 Foster Lane in Canyon, Texas, that chose to dump at 611 North Femburen in North Heights. When I confronted her, she refused to pick up any of the items she dumped on the property that the North Heights community has a stake in. I called the Amarillo Police Department, and even when Jan Newton admitted to dumping in addition to my eyewitness report and livestream video on Facebook and pictures, the officers refused to issue a citation. I had to insist on getting them to even write a trespassing warning to Jan Newton. I also asked for a report to be completed so that I could get a copy. I was told that they would only issue notes that would be taken and added to the dispatcher's log. I did everything possible that a citizen could do, in this case, and the Amarillo Police Department was negligent in its duties. Why? I've spoken to the Fire Marshal, Jacob Diaz, and Chief Jimmy Johnson numerous times since that about this incident, and they both have been very easy to work with on this matter. My expectation is that they will follow through with the positive improvements that they've promised. I don't think any law-abiding citizen of Amarillo wants illegal dumping. Council, I hope that you understand that a vision has to come from you, and a directive has to come from the city manager, and he has to be held accountable. I'm already working with Jacob Diaz to do more outreach in our community about illegal dumping, but I'm sure more resources would be helpful for him to handle this problem. Immediate change has to occur on how APD assists the community with the illegal dumping crisis so to weaken, keep people like Jan Newton out of our community. Thank you.
James, as a statement of fact, I'd like to point out that I do appreciate you acknowledging that the staff is currently working well and doing their job on this, and I will reiterate that the vision has been cast, and our crews have cleaned over 180 miles of alleyways so far, and will continue to clean up Amarillo. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next will be Ms. Stravato, and after Ms. Stravato will be Keith Graze.
Yes, I feel compelled to speak today about the First Amendment rights of the sheriff that was driven off this past week. The First Amendment gives everybody, even a chief of police, the right to express himself, particularly during the sentencing phase of a case. Regardless of the crime, which he acknowledged that his friend was guilty, he was simply offering information to be used by the judge in sentencing. It seems more and more, whether it be here or in Washington, DC, if we don't say the things that those people who hold office like, then we're in trouble. And we're in trouble if that's what's happening in our country. I just want to remind you all that even you have First Amendment rights under the U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Keith Graze is next, and after Mr. Graze will be Cassandra Green.
I'm Keith Graze, 2326 Northwest 11th, Amarillo, Texas, 79107, and I'm a people watcher. And I think, in addition to Pastor Batson, one of the fruit that I would like to talk about is long-suffering. And long-suffering has been part of what we have dealt with in North Heights community. I laugh at a lot of people that gawk at some of us who come because they see us as North Heights citizens. They don't see us as business owners. I own a business in the Marazan Building on Polk Street, 707 South Polk Street. I've been there 12 consecutive years, and it takes $100,000 or more to operate. There was a bloodbath left on the porch of 707 South Polk Street from a homicide next door at a local club, and it keeps happening. This club has something going on every Saturday night. One murdered, eight injured. I went there and couldn't get through, and in front of my building, my place became a safe haven, and I'll show you pictures where it looked like somebody bled to death, but that particular address was their safe haven. And if TABC can't help us, and we can't get more help on Polk Street, I'm not exactly little bunny foo-foo looking to be laughed at. It's okay if they laugh and make fun of us because we come from North Heights. The other thing is, long-suffering, 1200 North Monroe, is the old Ponderosa Apartments where I grew up. We are closing the schools, three blocks, Park Hills Elementary School, because we cannot populate those schools simply for the reason we don't have anywhere to build. If you look at Trade Winds and the Perry Williams Developments, they are impacting Trade Winds Elementary School. They are over capacity, 200 kids, but they're moving that direction because there's housing. And we thank Perry Williams and his group, but when that group came to work with our community development and to do some things in North Heights, the same thing, a filibuster. The other thing is, would you please assure our community that since we're going through some things with mindsets, that we can still celebrate Juneteenth? That you will still offer our community a parade permit and an events permit? That we can still have a Martin Luther King celebration? And for that, we thank you so much. And if you think that we don't think that it's possible that we could be, these freedoms could be taken from us, then think twice. It's happening all around us. And so the other thing, and I'll take my seat, is that you guys are talking about $750,000 from AEDC. You guys paid Jared Miller $750,000 from a drainage fund for a retirement, and we can't flush our toilets in North Heights, Amarillo, and streets don't drain accurately or adequately. Think twice before you just throw mud and play politics while we long-suffer in North Heights, Amarillo.
Thank you, Mr. Graze.
Cassandra Green. And on deck after Ms. Green will be Misty Collier.
And this is not what I'm coming up to talk about, but I definitely agree with Keith as well. But I'm here to talk about discussion item, oh, and I'm an Amarillo citizen, sorry. I'm here to discuss item 7D, which is the Digital Dignity Rights and Privacy Ordinance. And basically, I have received it today, and I've read over it briefly. So, moving forward, what I would like to see accomplished, and I'd like to ask you guys, can we participate in the meetings? I know I'm not staff, and I know I'm not a council member, but I'd like to be able to participate. Rich said he was going to talk to the legal, get legal advice, and I would just like to be present for all of that, so moving forward, we can know, it can be real transparent, and we can know what the ordinance is going to be like. That way, you know, we're in the loop, I guess. So, that's my one request. And there's some things that I like about this ordinance that he's going to talk about, and there's some opportunities I see. And he did make it known to me that he's still working on some aspects of it, so I just would like to be able to participate in the groundwork of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie.
Next is Misty Collier.
Hello, my name is Misty Collier. If you'll open your email, I sent you revisions to the ordinance. This is on 7D. I'm just going to run over them with you real quick. Rich Gagnon said that there is some other things that he's working on. On the original ordinance that we gave you, our paragraph 4.2, I've kind of revised, but it's the same, it's constitutional rights. So, if you'll just look on here, it says, for right to privacy, there's a second paragraph. On each second paragraph, it's going to tell you what it is missing that I would like included in there, and they are all constitutional rights. And then on the very last one, if you'll just look at the very last one, it says, "The ordinance does not explicitly address emerging threats like AI basis for misinformation or digital exclusion." So, that I for sure want in there, and also inherent human rights. And I do believe that it needs to be stated like that. You can talk to your lawyers about it. I would like to be included in the sessions that you have with your lawyers. If you can't, that's fine, but these are the constitutional rights that I would like to make sure are included, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry. I do appreciate you very much for making this a priority, even though everyone doesn't understand what it is. It is a very big thing. AI and technology is a very big issue, and I don't think that people realize the threat behind it. So, I appreciate this ordinance because it will make people feel comfortable, like they are being protected, and I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate you speaking, and as a statement of fact, we agree 100% and wholeheartedly support this. We'll work on it to make it as good as it can be, as comprehensive as it can be. But that Marine seated right over there on my right is the guy that's leading this effort, and he is working to make sure that all of this has the sharp point on it that it needs. And so, I appreciate his leadership in it, and we're here supporting him, and we're here supporting you as well, because this will be our community that's doing this. It's not the mayor and council that's doing it. So, thank you to Mr. Gagnon for his leadership in this.
Yes, thank you. And he has been very open and understanding, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up for public comment today.
Fantastic. Do I have anyone else here today who would like to offer public comment? I see the nice lady right here that raised her hand. Ma'am, if you want to come forward first, we'll get to everyone here that would like to speak. We don't hear our three-minute beep any longer. I'm not sure if that's a button that I still have or not. I don't see the trapdoor either, so if everyone would just be respectful of your three minutes, and I thank you for everyone who spoke and kept within their timeframe. Would you give us your name and residency, please?
Hi, my name is Shamika Kareem. I am a resident of the north side of Amarillo. I was born and raised here in Amarillo. I generally tend to travel for work and also expose myself to other environments outside of the north side of Amarillo. Based on the things that I have experienced and have exposed myself to, there is a bunch of lack on the north side, extremely in comparison to the south side of Amarillo, which I have also resided. I am here today to speak on, in particular, the project of the renaming of Meti Park, and I have some questions in regards to that, okay? My first question is, how much will this project cost? The second thing is my proposal. I would like for you all to continue with the proposal to change the name of the park, but I also have some questions and some things, suggestions, that I would like to offer in order for the park to thrive the way that it once did. So, my first question is, what happened to the park? At one point in time, it was so beautiful. It was gorgeous. I mean, grass green, the animals were much more than what they are now, and it just at one point was a nice park. I do know that there is a bunch of, what I would say, hospitalization going on over there for things that are dead, and where things are dead, there's not much life, like the north side of town. I don't see how we're supposed to thrive with everything around us being dead. The trees are dead. There's no sense of abundance there, and we are abundant there. There has to be a mindset shift. I digress. Another thing, the park surrounding needs to reflect how beautiful it is. I am very big on nature. I love nature. I love animals. I love all of it, and the animals there need to see the reflection. So, my proposal is that you hire local landscapers from the north side of town, and there are many, to come out and bid on contracts, that you allow the children of the community to be creative and paint the benches, that the trees, you all allow local arbiters to bid with the contracting on bringing them back to life, maybe, not even maybe, putting, giving them a name of people that advocate for the north side of town, because there are great people that advocate for our community, and the renaming of the trees can be that. Give them a name. Allow them to be named. Allow them to be cared for. Allow for their kind to be given to them so that our children can become in tune with nature. It seems like everyone has forgot about nature, and that's a big no. Community volunteering for trash while advocating for the change to be, for you to be the change that you want to see. I do recall Mr. Marcus, I believe his name was, stating about the trash in the community. Every Monday, I do host community picking up the trash with my children and other children in the community, but I do realize that I have to be the change that I want to see. But I do also realize that there are people on the south side of town that come out and pick out trash, I believe, so from the jails and stuff, and that would be nice if we could have that on the north side of town as well.
Sure. Ma'am, I appreciate you for speaking. We've gone wrong. If I could, I'd ask you to just go ahead and give the rest of those suggestions to any of our staff members so that we could take those into account. We do have some community engagement over there on the north side of town. Would love to have you engaged. We're looking for partners.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak here today? Yes, sir, Mr. Skank, why don't you go ahead and come forward? Mr. Fisher, I see your hand up next.
Wow, new digs. This is pretty cool. And the microphones work if you... And the microphones work if you get up to them. It's an important feature, and I appreciate that. Talking about this ordinance that y'all are working on, and I'd like to get a copy of what you're working on, and is it gonna go to, will we be able to vote on that law that you're putting in place? I know that y'all's responsibility is our representatives, but I sure would like to see some of what you're talking about and what the trouble is as soon as possible. So, that's all I wanted to talk about today.
Appreciate you, sir. Okay. We'll have something for you here soon. Mr. Fisher, would you come forward, and then?
Is, before I start, I'm curious if 7C, is that about the safety of the streets? It's called Comprehensive Street Update?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Okay, because Tom Sherlin requested that some safety stuff be brought up, and if it is, I'd ask for it to be taken off until he's here about the safety, street safety.
Okay, we'll get an update from Mr. Hooper when your time expires.
Okay. All right, I still don't have my AEDC data, so, and you still have Brian McWilliams here, and what you haven't figured out yet is if I don't get my data, I start digging out in other places. So I'm still gonna use my time and efficiency to find something, and I found something about Timmy's before I got here. And I was watching the little press conference about this place, nice place, but you know I'm not gonna be positive all the time. There are two phrases when it comes to, you know, that are either a lie or connected to a lie when it comes to the government, and those phrases are government efficiency and under budget, and they were used to describe the New City Hall building by Donnie Hooper and Jerry Danforth. So, I started looking, and I'm like, man, nothing ever comes under budget. It's never, it's never, never, ever. So I started looking, and if you believe that this $35 million place came in under budget, I've got some fuzzy math for you. The original budget included a parking garage, and that was scrapped, quote-unquote scrapped. And if you ever listen to Jerry Danforth, he always says that the prices are locked. So when the budget's approved, when this thing's locked in, all the prices are locked. It's not going up, or it's not by much. So, probably the most expensive part of this place should have been that garage. But we only came in 2 to 3 million under budget out of 35 million. So to put that in perspective, what does a parking garage cost? What did it cost across the street from Hotchtown? In 2014, it cost $15 million. Mr. Les Simpson, he knows, because he was on the LGC when they approved that, so you're pretty aware. So that was 15 million 10 years ago. What does it cost today, post-COVID? Maybe double? Was it 30 million? Was 30 million of the 35 million, the parking garage, and we only came in 2 million under? We're missing a lot of money, a lot of money. We're missing minimum 10 million. Let's just say, say you put in half the garage. If it was, if it's half of 15 million, that's seven and a half, but it doubled, so it's now back to 15 for half the size of that garage, but it's 15 of 35 million. So, we're missing a lot of money. The last thing, I just, I know my time's up, I would like to pull a Michael Ford here, just on your discussion items. You've got, these are very vague. If I looked at this and I said, what's, I'm gonna go talk about the Sunset Committee because I want better sunsets. I wanna be, this building's blocking my view. Let's see, what else? Comprehensive Street Update, what does that mean?
Yes, sir.
What do all of these mean? So they're very vague, and I really believe that there should be more descriptions.
I appreciate that, Mr. Fisher. We can look into noticing those discussion items more so. They are just discussion items, though.
Sure.
So, thank you for speaking. Welcome, Mr. Superintendent.
That's lame duck superintendent. Doug Loomis, proud citizen of Amarillo and very much lame duck superintendent, just here today, it won't take three minutes, but to implore you, the project that's going on with Tacovus, the opportunity to us get new homes, affordable homes in the north and the east part of Amarillo is just vital to the vitality of our community and our continued successes, and so I appreciate what you've done. Feels a little bit weird being on this side of the dais, it's usually on the other side for me, but thanks for what you do, and thanks for what you will do for the city. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Loomis. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Walt Weaver. I'm here at the behest of my wife, Betsy Weaver, and I'm talking about item 9, 9A, renaming John Ward, the proposed John Ward Memorial Park, renaming. My wife is a nurse, she spent her whole professional life here being a nurse. She worked at Labor and Delivery Northwest, has gone here at Amarillo College, she's presently transitioned over to the BSA Harrington Breast Cancer Center, and she asked me to read this statement, that Medhi Park was so named because it is in the medical district of Amarillo, it is very well-known to our residents and serves as a touchstone to patients when directing them to medical facilities. I'm sure John Ward was a nice person, but please leave the name as to honor Amarillo's history and then not diminish the impact of Amarillo's medical complex. On a personal note, I knew John, I represented John, and he's a wonderful person, and I realize he just passed. A lot of big cities have a rule, you can't name or rename something after someone after they've been dead five years. That lets everyone's passion be cool, and a no vote isn't a no against John. In this instance, if I remember the plaque, it says, "Our founding fathers of Amarillo had vision and donated the land, thinking that this could bring business, medical services to the Panhandle," and indeed, it has worked, and they didn't put their name on it. There's a lot of great things in town that John could be named after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Ford, please come next. I guess if anyone else would like to, since we're not raising hands, just line up at the back.
My compliments on the design. I would ask that the, maybe the facility folks look at the air changes coming through here, because it's a lot. I would like to just take a moment to echo Mike Ford, Amarillo, Texas, echo the statements that Alex Sherrill made at the special meeting, and I would like to stress the importance of continuing that work that has already begun. It's difficult work, you're being attacked in the community for doing that work, and I think the only way that we make a change in the culture of that organization is to complete the work. And in completing the work is, there's some work that's been started with the audit, but that was very superficial, there were the conclusions drawn from the audit, I don't recall seeing actually a written or an authoritative analysis. There are things like, I'll give one example out of dozens, okay? We have on this one page that has the backup, that was a part of the data that the gentleman provided in terms of the internal audit, $447,535.34 in miscellaneous revenue, almost a half a million dollars coded for the AEDC as miscellaneous. How is it possible that that half a million dollars does not have a specific project associated with it? That was accounted for, however, in various checks and whatnot. We have backup for that miscellaneous revenue. We don't have actual, have a source for it, but we do show backup. On the other hand, we have $447,535.34 in dues paid out immediately with no backup. Half a million dollars in dues, not itemized, not said where it goes, or who went to, or anything like that. That's the most, that would be the most largest amount of dues paid by the AEDC ever, and that went out as dues. And so this is why I would say to you, I would stress to you, that the work is not yet done, and the only way that we push back on the people who are saying, oh my goodness, you're damaging Amarillo, you're hurting our economic development prospects, you're hurting our prospects of coming forward here, that's all balderdash, folks. This has been the cookie jar of the wealthy and the well-connected for 30 years, and we can back that up in spades. Anybody who challenges that, we have the data. We have the data now, we're getting more data as I speak right now. And so, I know it's not a pleasant task, I know it's uncomfortable, and we're challenging, you're stepping on the third rail of Amarillo politics, and there is danger all around you. But I want to stress the importance of continuing that work and finishing the task at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Darden, if you'd come forward.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, Madam Secretary. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here to agree wholeheartedly with everyone that has spoken in behalf of North Hikes. Long before they came into this world, I was in North Hikes. It's been a long time. Mayor, I heard you say that it was not neglect, but a disconnect. How can something be disconnected that was never connected? And when will the disconnect be corrected? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have anyone else here who'd like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close that section of our meeting. I thank everyone for speaking here today, and also for those who listened, it's important. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Kishuba, I think I wanna go ahead and pull up item 9A out of order, in respect for those that are here for that, before we jump into discussion items. So, we're gonna have Michael Kishuba go ahead and walk us through item 9A, and then after that, we, council will come down there to do the presentation.
Mayor and Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item before you today is a public hearing and consideration of resolution to rename Medical Center Park in honor of Mr. John Ward as John Ward Memorial Park. You can see on the screen, we've got the steps that we went through in terms of the process. So staff reviewed the application that came from council. We did have some meetings with the board, which I'll talk about here in a minute, and then the last step of the process is to bring it to council as a public hearing for your consideration. In the municipal code, when we're considering naming a facility after an individual who has served as a city official or as an employee, these are the criteria, at least one of these criteria had to be met in order to consider renaming it. I want to just read for just a second some of the items that are actually listed in the resolution of what Mr. John Ward accomplished during his tenure. So, over his 21-year tenure as a city manager, Amarillo gained three new libraries, a downtown bus terminal, six new city parks, two new golf courses, a tennis center, police and court buildings, three new fire stations, fire administration building, and a youth baseball complex. In addition, the AEDC was developed, the airport terminal building was renovated, and the city's water supply reservoir was guaranteed for 300 years. The 911 Emergency Communications District was initiated, the Amarillo Zoo was expanded, Northwest Texas Hospital was constructed and sold, and Downtown Revitalization Organization known as Center City was established. So when we look at this, obviously that meets the threshold of renaming a facility in honor of Mr. John Ward. So when we went through this process with our park board, one of the things we did was we looked at the parks and tried to determine which ones had already been renamed and which ones were available for renaming. We didn't look at the smaller parks, we focused on our regional parks, our community parks, and some of those specialized city facilities. So when we had looked at the regional parks, you can see here, we've got Medical Center, which was not renamed previously, and it was recommended as a potential naming opportunity by Mrs. Ward. When we look at community parks again, these were the list that was presented to the park board, and also some of our other facilities. So again, Comanche Trail was another one that was recommended due to his love of golf. So what we've done is, we did a discussion with our park board, so this wasn't an action item, this was just a discussion, and that was to review the proposal to rename the park in honor of Mr. John Ward. The two that came up and were discussed was Medical Center and Comanche Trail, and obviously we kind of talked through the advantages, disadvantages of both. The board at that time decided to put public notices at both of those sites, so we had to post signs of public notice 15 days at both of those locations. And then we proposed a public hearing for January 15th. The January 15th meeting was a public hearing, and again, the board reviewed the proposals in both of the locations that had been discussed, both Comanche Trail and also Medical Center. Two citizens spoke, one of them was Mrs. Ward, and during the public hearing, Mrs. Ward was able to share some personal stories about the last four months of Mr. Ward's life and what the significance of Medical Center Park was, as she was leaving her husband at the hospital, going home, seeing people using that space. Initially, the park board was really leaning towards Comanche Trail, but after her testimony and after her statement about the importance of Medical Center, the board unanimously approved or recommended this forward to council for consideration. So the formal board recommendation was to rename Medical Center Park to John Ward Memorial Park. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council, for Mr. Kishuba? No? No questions, sir. Thank you for your presentation. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Would ask if anybody is here to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, we're able to close the public hearing, and so I'm gonna go ahead and hand this over to Councilman Simpson and ask him to walk us through the rest of this one.
Mayor, do we need to have an official vote on this resolution?
Well, let me ask Mrs. Coggins, would we like to vote before we do the presentation?
I would recommend voting just to ensure that the resolution passes.
The mayor, if I may, I vote to adopt resolution 02-25-25-4 as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second from Councilman Place 2. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 4-0 vote. Mr. Simpson, you're up.
Yes, so what we'd like to do, council would like to go down right now to the front. We would like to ask, obviously, Mrs. Ward to come forward, but all friends, former coworkers, anyone who is here today, we'd like to ask you to come forward as well. We have a presentation that we wanna make, so council will go down, and then if you'll come up here with us to celebrate this time of renaming the park.
Well, thank you and everyone for being here today for this honor that we'd like to bestow, and you've heard, obviously, the history and the significance that John Ward contributed to our community for his more than 20 years here as city manager, and it's an honor for council here to be here today as we rename Medical Center Park on this date, February 25th, 2025, in honor of significant contributions to the city of Amarillo and its citizens by our former city manager. As you do today, we made it official to officially name this park John Ward Memorial Park. Park.
I don't know if we want to get a picture of everyone here? So, can we go ahead and have Kristen or one of the guys come on and take a photo? Okay. You guys are screwed together, very close. And then I think if we back up a little bit, we'll talk.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And take your left side. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to do that, and would really just like to close that out with 30 years of outstanding service for the city, very influential, and somebody who still makes a continual impact on the city here today. So, a lot of the things that we enjoy, and that we take for granted, have been provided, you know, through men like John Ward, that showed up every morning early, before the rest of us even thought about getting out of bed, to take care of the things so your toilet would flush, and so the water would come on, and that the snow would get removed, and, and so many different things. So, really grateful for the family and the ability to honor a man like that. So, thank you all for sitting through that with us. We're going to move into Item 7. So we're on 7A, Council, do I have anything you guys need pulled off for additional information?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're moving to Item 7B, Ms. Cashin Smith, you're up on a CVB policy.
Yes. Okay. I like the new building, my favorite is the new chairs. So, today, I really, let me get here, wanted to make you aware and get feedback, if y'all had any. Our financial policies, I believe in the packet, was in total, but there are two specific areas that I wanted to call out, and just make sure you were familiar with. These, of course, were put together as we were forming the nonprofit organization that we are now, so in 2020 and 2021, we did a lot of policy work. We did, back in, I believe, October, go in and add, under our budget process and our reserve policies, add into the process comments about city council. So if you'll see, under the Executive Director May Approve Budget Adjustments, that do not increase overall annual budget totals, and for line items that do not exceed $15,000. So what this is saying in our financial policy is that I would have the capability of making decisions to fluctuate, or to move $15,000, say we decided not to do a project, or a software company that we had planned on working with, closed, and, and we've got extra funds that up to $15,000, I could make a decision on where to utilize those funds. Up to $50,000, our executive committee would be able to approve that for me, this is within the budget year, in an approved budget. And then anything over $50,000 would go then back to our board for approval, and then have to come to city council. And then with our reserves, we added the statement at the end of that, that any use of reserve funds must be approved by the Visit Amarillo Board of Directors and Amarillo City Council. So since we formed in 2020 and, and started using policies, I mean, not to go back into COVID speak, but you know, we, we really didn't have money, so these have not come up. Later today, I'll be making a request for reserves, and through some of the things that we've been watching over the last few months, realized that these statements were left out and needed to be in there. So, really just wanted to make you aware that they're there, make sure that you're comfortable with the amounts that are in our policies, any feedback that you choose to give, that you would want me to take back to the board, or if you're comfortable kind of where we're, where we're living right now.
Questions or feedback for Cashin, Council? No? Anything? Okay.
Cashin, we think you do a great job, so we're just going to stay out of your way, bring it back when it's ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 7C, Comprehensive Street Update, from Mr. Hooper.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this is nice. Good to be up here at this, this podium and in this new facility, to talk about something that we've been talking about for several months. I might mention a couple of things as we start through this presentation. It's going to be a little bit lengthy, I've got Alan Harder, our Director of Public Works here, as well as Kyle Sneeterjohn, our Director of Capital Projects and Engineering, in case we have any questions that could come up for them at the end of this. Mr. Path requested, probably a couple of months ago, if I look back at the date on that, that we would evaluate our processes, our needs for street planning, and prepare a presentation for Council to bring you up to speed on where we're at with some of the changes we're making and the processes that we have in place. So myself, Kyle, Alan, along with Laura Storres and many others, got together and spent much time revamping everything, taking a look at our processes, so that we could come give you this presentation and an update today. Now this is part one, of what we assume is going to be maybe three or four presentations leading into the budget time. So today is really a high-level overview of where we're at with some of our processes, and then we'll talk next meeting, which we, we're kind of projecting that to be the second meeting in March, to talk about more details on the financial picture, when our CFO, Laura Storres, is going to be here to join us for that one. So today, just bear with me as we get through this, there's some definition, definitions I want to talk about today. The purpose of the presentation is to define the pavement condition index, we want to talk about that so that you understand how we evaluate our street conditions, we'll define our assessment process that we use to determine which streets need to be repaired. We'll also give you a general overview of Prop 1, and the status that we're at now in our plan for allocating the remaining funds of Prop 1. Again, a high-level overview of that, we'll discuss our priorities, our planning, proposed funding levels for street maintenance, repair, and construction, and we'll also address any of our annual funding and street maintenance needs at a high level, as well as our funding plan for major reconstruction projects, and we'll discuss PCI curves and our street assessment data that we have available to us today. So what is a PCI? I want to put this all at the front, because sometimes we talk this language and we forget that not everybody knows the language that we speak when we're looking at our streets. PCI index is basically, it's used all across the country, it's a numerical index that ranges from 0 to 100. 0 is bad, 100 is good. The purpose of that is to assess the surface quality, there's many other things that a PCI can determine with your streets and the conditions of them, and the way that we do our assessments, gives us valuable data so we can make good, informed decisions when we're talking about repairs for our streets. It's used in pavement management systems all over the country to prioritize those repairs and allocate their budget dollars for that. So how do we determine what a PCI is? We actually have, we conduct a road condition survey to collect data on the roads and get their conditions. We identify distress types, cracks, potholes, rutting, all the things that occur out there. Texas Panhandle is a very interesting place to manage streets, because our weather is so different. We have 105 degrees in the summer, we have, as we saw last week, 0 degrees. Quite a range in temperatures, and that does a lot of different things that are usually not good to your streets, especially when the conditions on the PCI are a little bit lower than they should be. We also identi, we calculate our PCI based on the distresses observed during that survey. From that, we value and assign, or we can, we can obtain a dollar value and assign those to the different types of repairs that we need for our maintenance. Our streets then can be scheduled for repairs based on the best-first scenarios to preserve the healthiest of roadways, and those are discussions we, of course, would bring to you during budget time, such as we did last year and the previous year, where you were able to make some very informed decisions on some of the things that we needed for our roadways. I want to put this picture in there, because this is a picture of the unit that we use to do our pavement condition index, it does our pavement surveys, this is a company that we've hired for the past two or three surveys that we've done. Just a couple of graphs that come out of that, the, the, the computer system that is inside of these pieces of equipment is, is very, very complex. It will determine ruts, the roughness of the road, or the ride quality, if you will, faulting, cracking, joint distresses, spalling, so much more data that comes out of that. And sometimes the results indicate the need, I, I kind of look at it this way, that truck right there is like getting an MRI for your streets. And sometimes when the report comes back, we have to have open-heart surgery on some of those locations, sometimes we need a couple of stitches. And that's the way we look at that, it's the best way I can describe what that piece of equipment does for us, but it's very valuable, provides us a lot of data. There's a lot of stuff that happens on the back end of that, once we get that data and we get it in-house, and that's the engineer's job to go through there and evaluate that data and actually put that to work. This is a typical PCI curve, this is actually something I got from the American Public Works Association, because I wanted to get something that is used as a national standard. We have a little bit different PCI curve that we use, in the fact that it has seven different categories on there instead of five. But basically, if you look at this PCI curve, this shows you a street that's in excellent condition, far left, the top side of that, that is basically a brand-new street, just paved, just open to the first piece of traffic, and it is in excellent condition, has a PCI of 100. Once that street is opened, and it has traffic on it, that PCI will start to move immediately downward. And that's where you have your first five years of maintenance, if you look at the bottom, across the bottom from left to right, that's where we really need to start thinking about doing maintenance items, as well as the 10-year, 15-year, once you get to 15, you see that curve drops off. The key to this is, if you take care of your maintenance at the top portion of that curve, you're going to see prices $4 to $8 a square yard, as opposed to $45 to $75 a square yard if you get to the bottom end of that curve. This is a little bit better graphic of that, this is, this shows you kind of the, the repairs, if you will, from left to right, a good street, doesn't take much, put an orange cone up, that's really all they have there, but as you go to the right, you see the cracking, you see the alligator, and you see the formation of potholes, those get bigger and bigger and bigger. The green is good, the black is failed on the right, and of course, you get into the poor, very poor and serious conditions, you have a lot of cost associated with that. Our average PCI on our streets right now, on our arterials, now this is not the entire network, but it's very close on the entire network, but just on arterials is 74.5. That's actually a pretty good PCI rating. A community that I used to live in, about a year and a half ago, that I moved back to Amarillo from, their PCI rating there was 62. I went back and verified that to make sure, so 74 is actually, we're in a pretty good place, when it comes to PCI. Would we want that to be higher, of course, and you can change that through many different methods, but we feel pretty good about 74.5. In fact, back in 2018, 2019, we always thought that if we could maintain a 70 PCI across our network, we would be doing very well. There are some reasons for that being in the 74 range, and I'll tell you that as we continue to go through this process. These are our arterial street conditions, based on the PCI index, from good all the way down to failed, has how many miles of streets are located, and again, this is just the arterials. But the thing that I want to point out about this is that this data is two years old. The last time we did a street assessment was in the year '22, they, they started that in the winter, we finished up with the data right after the first year, about this time of year, and we got that in '23. So it's two-year-old data, and not really accurate to what we're looking at now. I will tell you then, the very poor category, and 20, about '21, 2021, there was 23 miles in the very poor category. Why has that changed? We've had streets such as Western, and if you think of Western in length, and that's all you think about, you're not getting the right lane miles, because there's six lanes across Western Street that we redid for, for several miles. We also did Port, Hagie, Wallace, some of those were rebuilds. Those streets went to 100 when we did the rebuilds on those, and so that, of course, changed our overall PCI and took some of that out of the very poor. We think we have some more that have made their way down to the very poor, due to weather, due to some of the flooding that we had, et cetera, but this is a good look at at least what we had two years ago. And PCI is a great tool, it prevents you, it gets you some fancy numbers, it gives you a good evaluation, but I think when we take that, we have to talk about the strategy. What are we going to do with those numbers? What are we going to do with numbers that are two years old? And to us, we think we can do better than that. So we have five priorities and goals, after, in response to Mr. Path's request, we, we came up with five planning priorities and goals of how we can move forward with our street planning, and, and how we're going to be looking at things from this point forward. Priority one would be to execute a plan immediately to spend all the remaining Prop 1 dollars prior to meeting expenditure deadlines, that is our number-one goal. With that, policy development for future bond projects, how do we handle those moving forward? How do we make sure that we do not get back in positions that we've been in before, that we've talked about in front of this Council? Monthly and quarterly internal stakeholder meetings to track the progress of all of our projects, all of our funding, and all of our deadlines. We have to make sure that we are all on the same page, whether that's the finance office, whether that's accounting, whether that's CPNDE, whether that's us over in Public Works, whether it's the city managers, whoever it is, we've all got to be on the same page, and that's one piece that I think we all strongly agreed on, that we have to have more quarterly meetings to make sure that we're all speaking the same language, when we speak to the public and when we speak to you about how we're handling our, our prop dollars. Priority two would be implementing changes to our street assessment scheduling and modeling, we think that three-year model that we're under now is too far out, we've got some ideas for that. Priority three is establish a revolving fund method for maintenance projects. Priority four is establishing a funding plan recommendation, for recommendations annually for street reconstruction projects. And then priority five would be the creation of an in-house mill-and-fill operation, including the equipment and reallocation of existing funding and personnel that would create that mill-and-fill operation. That would be something we would discuss in budget, obviously, it's not something we're looking to do mid-year, it'd just be something that we're looking at, again, to do at budget time. So let's talk about in detail some of these items. Prop 1, spending looks like this, we, our current issuance that we're under now is 35.5 million, the 85% target deadline is February of 2026, we feel very confident that we're going to not only meet that deadline, but meet it handily. Our target date for staff now, we pushed back to October of 2025, so we should see the completion of the spending of that portion, the final remaining portion of Prop 1, to be in October. And again, it reminds you, I think the, the bigger discussion on these dollars, these items are going to occur next, next meeting in March, when we have our CFO here to talk in detail about those numbers. Our 100% deadline for expenditure of those funds is July of 2026, we think we're going to have no problem reaching that as well, and we've set our target date as April of 2026 for that. I think that more than likely, we'll probably be way ahead of schedule, even on the April date that we set up there. And that's after many discussions that we've had with Kyle and his staff, since the Georgia Street Project that's on the agenda today is a big piece of that project in spending the Prop 1 dollars. So that's our priority number one. This is a Gantt chart that you have in front of you, and it's a critical component to completing priority one. This is something that you ask for during budget time, Mr. Sneeterjohn and his staff have worked very hard to complete this, so that we can make sure that we're meeting those deadlines. I don't want to really talk in detail about this Gantt chart today, this will be a part of our topic of discussion at the March meeting as well, but I wanted you to have it in your hands, so that when we get to the March meeting, it's not the first time you've seen it. You have a little bit of time to digest it, you have time to come back to staff and ask questions between now and that meeting in March. Priority two would be our street assessment changes, we feel like we need to revamp our processes for street assessment. Currently, we are assessing all of the streets, which includes the arterials, the residential, the collectors, we're doing them all. We fill out a new model for that, would be to assess just the arterials only and the major collectors, and remove the residential from that. We pretty much know what we have in the residential areas as far as condition, and we also don't see the traffic load that we see on the arterials that we see, we don't see them in the residential that we see on the arterials. So we would propose conducting a survey annually, instead of every three years, so that that data is fresh, and we're looking at new maintenance projects each year. Street assessment is the best tool for determining that type of treatment, or whatever's needed on those streets, as I mentioned, so that the details of that would be, we would do our arterials only, we would conduct those assessments in the winter months, that's when you want to do a street assessment, because it's cold and all those cracks have opened up. You can get the best bang for your buck doing it then. Have streets identified and prepared for presentation prior to budget discussions. We need to be able to come to budget when we start meeting early on, and put good information in Council's hands, so we can make smart decisions when it comes time to allocate the money during that budget process. Street evaluation costs, just to show you what that would look like, if we do it per year, it's about $150,000, every three years, $450,000, same amount of dollars. We have that actually on an agenda that's coming up, I believe, it may be on this agenda here, I can't remember if we moved, we pushed that to next one, it's the next meeting, where we have our street assessment. We want to get that started now, so that we can have that data. But it's the same dollars, we're just doing it, and we're getting fresh data every year. The difference is, we're taking the residential streets out, and we're just doing arterials, and that's where we see the cost savings that makes that price the way that it is. Priority three would be future funding plan for maintenance, we need, we were asked through Mr. Path as part of this, to determine what the best use of a million dollars a year would be, how we could take that million dollars and expand it out, create some, some good maintenance planning from that. One million in debt would generate a And that's where we see the cost savings that makes that price the way that it is. Priority three would be future funding plan for maintenance. We need, we were asked, through Mr. Path, as part of this, to determine what the best use of a million dollars a year would be. How we could take that million dollars and expand it out, create some, some good maintenance planning from that. One million in debt would generate about 8.5 million for street maintenance. Current street assessment data indicates, and that's the two-year-old data, that we would need about 12 million per year if we wanted to maintain that PCI of 74. So there's a little bit of a delta there between 8.5 and 12 million. 1.4 million in debt would generate approximately 12 million dollars, where we would be able to keep the same PCI moving forward and better maintain our streets. And again, I think we'll talk really specifically in detail about the dollars and all that when we get to budget. We just want to start having the discussions now. Existing annual maintenance budget, 2.6 million that we have in our, and that's an annual budget that we have for overlay. We would use that to create our internal mill and fill operation, at least, is that's what we would be proposing. The rest of priority three would be to continue with our maintenance methods. We've, we've changed the way that we are doing maintenance over the past few years. We've seen it make a difference in our PCI. We've added new components, such as micro-surfacing, Cape seal, along with overlays, in addition to what we were already doing with patching and chip seal, and I think that has made a big difference in what we're doing. We would like to continue with those maintenance methods in priority three. Also, the use of our DuraPatters, that is an actual picture. Councilman Tips was asking me, "Where are those at?" Well, there you go. That's setting in our yard right now. These are DuraPatters, we'll be using those for preparation in general, patching and maintenance. Those will be on the road pretty soon. We are waiting on materials. We've actually, there's been a lot to this. We got the trucks ordered, we got those delivered, and then we had to build a plant as well to be able to store the emulsion and the materials that it uses. We've got that done. Now we just have to get all the materials in place, and we can start using those trucks. We're probably about a month out from being able to start those operations. And as I mentioned before, we're going to set up a time, and we're going to invite council to come out and operate that equipment. We'll find a parking lot that needs some, that has big wide spaces with no telephone poles that you can hit, and we'll let y'all get in there and operate that equipment and see how easy it is. We're going to be doing some maintenance, and we thank you for allowing us to be able to purchase those. We think they're going to be a difference-maker. But we want to continue to use those as part of our priority three. Priority four is reconstruction, and you saw that there, you know, there are some, you know, when we looked at that chart earlier, I forgot to mention that even though it didn't show that we had any miles of streets in the poor, very poor, we know that there are places out there that are poor and very poor, and they're going to continue to decline as we move forward. We need to start planning and develop a CIP plan for major reconstruction projects. There are streets that need to be rebuilt now. We need to prioritize those based on traffic volumes and conditions. Sometimes we get a list in front of us, these are the streets we're going to do, weather, conditions, other things change that list and can make things move back and forth on there. We need to be able to reevaluate that before we start to do the work on those, and create a plan to fund them with future bonds. Maintenance funding that we've been talking about, which is a separate topic, will not eliminate the need for reconstruction. If you've already reached the point that you're going to reconstruct a street, it's failed, and it can no longer be maintained. I use an example all the time of a vehicle that you just don't change your oil in, and then you get to 50,000 miles and the engine locks up, and you say, "Well, I'll go get my oil changed, and we'll fix it right up." Doesn't work that way. You have to continue to maintain those things. But once it's failed, and every vehicle, no matter how much you maintain it, is going to fail at some point in time, and that's the same thing with our streets. Additional streets with declining PCIs will be needed for reconstruction in the future. Our priority four, planning changes, look like this. What we propose is construction projects requiring large bonds would have an entirely different process to it than what we went through in 2016. For projects that are beyond maintenance, we would issue debt for design only. I think it's smarter, it's wise for us to issue debt, get a list of those streets, create a plan for those, get all the design work done on those, and have shovel-ready projects ready to go before we issue any debt for construction on those. When those projects are designed, become shovel-ready, then we can come back and say, "Council, here's a list of these streets, these are what we think the priorities are, we can issue the debt for construction, and we can award that right away and get started on the work." Actual cost for construction will be more accurate after design is completed as well. We have a design that takes two and a half years, construction prices can change in two and a half years greatly. So that's something I think is very important that we do moving forward. Issue debt for the construction. Construction timeframes would meet the expenditure deadlines well ahead of schedule if we stay with this plan. Priority five, we talked about the in-house mill and fill operation. This is something that we do not have now. Creation of an in-house mill and fill program costs about $3 million for the first year to buy the equipment. We would transition, our plan at least would be, and again, these are just proposals, we're just talking about a plan, to transition our current internal seal coating crew into the paving season into a mill and fill crew. That's cost-neutral, we already have the employees. The struggle that we have with seal coat or chip seal is keeping utility workers, or having enough utility workers to do that project, because it takes a lot of employees to pull off a chip seal. It's a little bit different with the mill and fill crew, it's a smaller crew, and we think we have the staff that we could pull that off with. We would focus on just our arterials, but this would allow us to do large, longer patches in areas that need that, and it would give it more extended life, five to seven years in those areas that are needing some of those larger repairs. We would use our DuraPatters for the small failures, patches and alley repairs, things like that, and contractors for residential resurfacing projects to maintain the 10-year cycle. And that, that would be for chip sealing and things like that. So that would be our priority five. This is our PCI rating that we currently have compared to a funding model. Let me walk you through this. If you look at the top bars that go from left to right, we're currently at a 75.3 in our overall network. In order to maintain that, you match that with the orange below, that was the $12 million funding model annually to keep that 75. If we stayed with the funding model that we have now, which is the 2.6 million, you see that PCI start to decline immediately. We also feel that you see the, the black line, the vertical line there, our decreasing level of confidence is only about two years out. Once you get past that, there's too many variables, there's too many things that happen, traffic loads. I'll give you a good example. We have a subdivision that starts building, all of a sudden, you have a lot of heavy equipment that's going up and down that road. Well, it's traffic that may have been looked at in our assessment two years prior, and now you're going to see a lot of wear and tear on that, and it's going to change that confidence level. Like I said, you know, a couple of years out, that's all we're confident. But the point of this slide is to show you that if we continue with the funding levels that we're at now, our PCI would decrease down to 66.5, which is a pretty unacceptable PCI, and that would be by '28, '29. We think that our, our model would be able to make good use of that. We have an improved maintenance plan, this is kind of the last portion of this, and this is back to, to maintenance. Assuming that we had $12 million in total annual funding, we would begin our street assessments in November. I mentioned doing that in the winter, when the cracks are open back up. We would begin design of new maintenance projects one year ahead of schedule, and we would be using methods of best-first scenario based on funding models. What that means is, we would take the best of our worst streets and attack those first, because they're the highest on the PCI rating, and we would want to bring those up as quickly as we could before we lose them. The street assessment would produce that data-driven decisions for the upcoming budget year. Projects need to be out-for-bid early enough to get interest from contractors. Sometimes we are getting, in fact, we're going to be doing it this year again, getting our bids out so late in the season for maintenance that a lot of them are already tied up, they're already doing work somewhere else. We need to make sure that we're giving them plenty of time to get interest from our contractors to do the work. And award street maintenance projects earlier, so that the full season is utilized as well. We go into a summer maintenance program, we should be doing that over the summer months. We should be ready to start those programs in April and beyond. So what we did, we put together a little just graph here, and I'll, I'll walk you through this. We'll start with the blue at the top of the page. We should be starting our design for summer maintenance a year in advance, beginning in June. We're planning to do that this year. Continue to follow the blue all the way through design phase, continuing through October. We'll review that in November as a staff. We'll get that out-for-bid in November or December, award the bid in February, and then we're ready to begin construction in March or April, where the red begins down there. And you follow the red back up to the top, then our summer maintenance, construction, maintenance will continue all the way down through the end of the season, which is at the end of October. At that point in time, we would begin our street assessment in November, right again, for the next year. This would become cyclical, we would do this every year on this schedule with that funding plan. And I think that is a smart way to do business, I think it's a smart way to keep our PCI up, and I think it's the best use of our tax dollars to do something like that. Our next steps would be to gather feedback from council, revise any planning methods or goals that we presented here today. We can do that several ways. We have, we have a few weeks before we get to the next meeting, so we would certainly entertain any ideas that you have or comments through Mr. Path. We can set up those one-on-one meetings if we need to do that. We can take comments here as well. We'd like to come back in March to discuss revisions and financial details from our, with our CFO. And then we'll begin revisions of our plan based on that feedback that we get in direction from the city manager. Our third presentation would occur in April, and that would be for the purpose of finalizing plans and preparing for budget discussions, which would be coming up soon after that. So I know this is a lot of information to digest, but I just, I think that it's better for us if we get it to you now, so that we can start having real discussions about it when we get to budget, and you're not going into those things handcuffed without enough information. So hope it wasn't too much today. There's more discussions on this coming, and I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
Questions, council.
On the proposed plan, as far as debt funding, I mean, how far are y'all trying to issue debt every year for the next, through fiscal year '28, '29?
Yeah, we haven't even really got to that portion of the discussion. I think that's something that we're going to have to do when we, when we start talking next, at the next meeting in March. This is just really, like I said, a high-level overview of what we think we need to do for maintenance. You see the 12 million on there, that's what we're proposing for the maintenance piece of that, which would be something on a rolling debt fund for maintenance. Now, as far as the construction projects are concerned, we have a list of things that we can start to go through at some point in time and talk about, for sure.
Yeah, we would be looking at trying to size the debt around the project being done. Obviously, you don't want to issue debt that's going to outlast the life of the project we're doing, so. So we have some maintenance projects that, as Mr. Hooper talked about, so we'd be looking at issuing debt, and keeps that, keeps that life expectancy in mind for that. So whether it's five to eight years, there's, there's a few options there with that. But we'd be a revolving program to every year, issuing debt, so we can keep doing the, our projects each year.
Okay. And then the, I saw on there, issuing debt for the design phase only. Do you have a rough estimate of, just take Georgia Street for example, how much was the design cost on that? Do y'all have any idea?
Typical design costs on those type of projects, anywhere from 13% to 20%, depending on the complexity. A reconstruction would be significantly more than, say, a maintenance program, but, you know, somewhere between 10% to 13% on a maintenance program would probably be pretty accurate.
Okay. The last question I have, as far as in relation to, just say, like annexation, so, you know, say that a section of land or a certain amount of area is annexed in, and that has existing roads, does that end up bumping at the top of the list when you're talking about worst of the best, or best of the worst?
The best first, yeah. What we would do is, that would all just be evaluated in that assessment that we do. So it's going to, it's going to assess every arterial that we have, and then give us a rating scale from that. We can plug in numbers to that, and it will give us what order, based on the criteria that we put into the computers, which ones that we would do in that best-first scenario. They actually have that built in. You can do a worst-first scenario, or best-first, however you want to plug it in.
Okay. I guess just my main concern would be, is like, well, what do you do about the worst of the worst streets? If that makes sense.
Yeah, that's where we start looking at reconstruction, and that's, that's again, the pieces that we talked about, that will take a little bit more planning to get those. We have a pretty good list already started of things that we would need to be doing as far as the heavy maintenance, or reconstruction, things like that, and it would just have to be discussed as a separate item.
Okay. Donnie, with the Prop 1 dollars, I know that we, you've got it scheduled, right? And we say that there doesn't seem to be a problem, we should be able to spend it. So my question is, why not now? Why, why, why are we not expending those dollars first?
We are.
We are? So there just hasn't been any projects?
Yeah, there's projects that are underway right now that are, they're spending Prop 1 dollars. Absolutely.
So we, we were at like 34 million, is that right?
35.5, I believe, yeah.
35.5. So that, we've spent that down. We've spent about five, so we're at 30.
It's spent down, yes. I mean, there's still money that's in that 35.5, and that's why we're saying, if you look at the Gantt chart, and when we talk through that, you can kind of see all of the different projects that are underway. Polk Street's a good example, that's one of the projects that's being funded with those dollars, and it's underway right now with expected completion this summer. I think that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so, so those dollars are first out, right? I mean, those, those are first, design phase, whatever, those are the first ones out?
Correct.
Okay.
Shovel-ready.
I'm just looking at the dates and thinking, we don't even want to get close, right? I mean, because where we were, like, we just don't want to get closer.
Right. I don't, I don't think that we will. I think we have full confidence, they're going to be well ahead of schedule on those, as far as expending those dollars. Absolutely.
Good, good. Now, on the assessments, I know that we're, you know, we're going to a year-by-year, so 150 instead of 450, but we've removed the residential. So how often will we check the residential?
And I'm sorry, Don, I'm having trouble hearing what you're...
I'm good. So we removed, on the street assessment projects, you know, when we're, we bring those guys in.
Okay, I got you.
So we went to an annual, go to 150 a year versus 450, correct?
Correct. That's what we're proposing to do.
Right, so we removed the residential, how often is the residential going to, where are you going to bring that back in? Where's it going to be looped back in?
We, we've talked about that, and we think that we can probably do that on like a four-year cycle, bring those back in where we're doing those. A lot of times, we can evaluate something like a residential too, the old-fashioned way. We can drive some of those where we know we have problem areas, and we can identify areas that we need to add to that assessment. We just kind of, I, I think we should play it by ear and see what happens. I think the biggest need we have, though, is in the arterials, not the residentials.
Yeah, I would agree. But I would, I would be concerned that we, I, I wouldn't want to get in a, in a budget session and realize that we need an additional 300 to go assess.
Oh, correct, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we would handle that well ahead of time.
Okay.
I think when we're doing it a year ahead of time, like what we're talking about, that gives us the best opportunity for you to see that well in advance of what we're planning for, for even the up-and-coming summer that's a year away.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
And that could be one of the, one of the, voice loud, that could be one of the, one of the requests that we come back with, if the council so wishes. of the requests that we come back with if, if the council so wishes. We could, uh, we could bring back a budget request to, to, we, we've kept the numbers 150 in order to keep the budget neutral, but if, if you like to add residents, then we can always add to the budget for that purpose as well. So, but one of, one of the tasks here was trying to stay within the current means we have and, and, and focus on the biggest portion of the community we could, so. But we could add funding to do as residents we wanted to.
And I, and to further, just one little last thing on that was, as we looked at the data we've been gathering from these assessments, it's all valuable, right? But the data that we were actually using to do projects was more in the arterials, if that makes any sense. So, we still have some pretty good data that's there that's not gonna get beat up as bad over time and we think we can just stretch that out a little bit. That's why we're doing that. I just think it's just a, a better way to, to manage the assets that we have.
Okay. Thanks. So, what, so the, the PCI assessments we're doing, it's on the major north, south, east, west roads? I mean, what, what roads are we, the score that you showed?
Every arterial, so 24th, Grand, Ross, Coulter, Western, Bell, 45th, Hillside, all of the north, south, east, west main quarters. There are some collectors in there as well that we'd be doing, such as like Paramount. It's all the major roads is, is what we would be collecting data on.
And what I'm seeing at first glance is 1.4 million a year, 12 million in debt keeps us status quo with the streets.
It keeps us at a PCI range that we feel is good.
Okay. What is a, so what is an affordable PCI range? I mean, 'cause some people might say, our streets are probably, need to be better than they are right now, I mean, if we're scoring that, but some may say, I mean, what is an affordable, what is an ideal PCI score? I mean, it's not, you know, we can't keep it at 100, but are we on, are we better than most? Are we worse than most? We were worse than one, but...
The American Public Works Association usually goes with around a 72, 73, somewhere around that range, and everybody's gonna have a different opinion on that. There are some communities that want it to be higher than that. Tech Dot has a number that they target as well, I'm not sure what it is, on their highways. So, everybody has a target that they want, but it's all in that 70 range. I would say it's between 70 and 75.
And then, any debt issued, I mean, according to what I looked at, would not be able, we can't issue any more debt at this point until we reach the 85% target on the Prop 1?
No, no, I think we, we have the ability to do that. We've been working bond counsel and financial advisors. The main thing is we need to show we had a plan, the plan to spend the money. And so, we have done that and so, any hesitancy that we were getting was not having a plan in place. And so, this is a plan that shows our, our investors who look at us that we have a plan to get the money spent, so they're, they're much more comfortable with us.
And then the Dura-Patchers, that's the equipment that we authorize, I guess, in the fall for...
Yes, sir.
Potholes? Tell me a little bit, again, the advantage to, to those versus how we have been?
Oh, man. We can, we can patch potholes a lot faster than we are doing them now. And, and when we, we talk about potholes, there's, there's several different things that we look at. One of those is the normal pothole that someone calls in, hey, there's a pothole at this location that needs to be fixed. Some of them are larger areas that have now come out because of weather and some of them are in preparation for doing larger projects, such as a Cape Seal or something like that. We'll go in and patch ahead of time to get ahead of those. These machines themselves have a snorkel in the front of them. It has an aggregate that mixes in there with an emulsion, comes right out the driver, and you only take one person that's driving it. They drive up, turn their flashers on, spray the emulsion, put the rock in, mix with the emulsion and drive away and it's done. Now, again, you know, potholes don't last, or these pothole repairs don't last forever in either method that we use, but we can do one in a very short order where, instead of having two or three people jackhammering out a piece of asphalt, coming in with a machine, hand putting in the asphalt and getting also a little bit of a ride surface that sometimes is uncomfortable as well, a little speed hump, if you will, in some locations, depending on what the size of that, I think this will help with that as well. Alan and I went down to Denver City and we watched them operate some of these trucks and we were just blown away by how quick they could do the work. Now, there are some areas that we're not gonna be able to, you know, use them in, in a large patch area because it's gonna have some of the rock mixed into that. We wanna be careful with that and make sure we're not picking up rocks and throwing them on the road and things like that in the higher-speed areas, but for most of our arterials and our alleys, it's gonna make a huge difference. While we have our contractors that are working on our patching right now, our first plan is to put them in the alleys and, and get caught up on some of our patching there.
Okay. And then, last question, the, issuing the debt for the planning separately from the project, tell me, what, what, what does that gain us? What is the advantage in doing that?
The advantage to doing that is the fact that when you, when you bid out, and let's just hypothetically say we have 15 streets that we were gonna completely rebuild and we're gonna ask you to give us $50 million for that. If we issue that for the entire thing, then we've gotta start designing. We start designing, that's gonna take time. The clock starts ticking. Our shot clock is already going, right? So, we wanna make sure that we, well, it's gonna be difficult with some of those if you have land acquisition, if you have other things such as drainage that you have to put into those areas. Those projects become long in the construction phase and we don't want anything interfering with that time clock that we've all become so familiar with over the past couple of years. So, we think if we do the design first, get them shovel-ready, the conditions that street are not gonna change if it needs to be rebuilt and have major reconstruction on it, have those ready to go so that we can lay them all out and say, which ones are we gonna fund now and which ones are we gonna repair? And then we can start issuing construction documents right away. We'll already have the plans done. So, it saves us time and it, and it helps us with that shot clock to make sure that we finish all those projects within the allotted time.
So, in the past, if we took out the $50 million all at one time...
Correct.
It could be a year or two before we're starting the construction.
Sometimes it could be a year or two before we could even get the land or right-of-way acquired on some of those projects that we had put on the list to work on.
Well, and in the meantime, I guess you're paying interest on all that debt for the money that's just sitting there, just continuing to, to cost taxpayers money when we're not using it for several more years. Okay, thank you.
Just following the money, I saw 8 million in the report. Tell me, 1 million back at budget was running us roughly $14 million worth of borrowing power. I know that was a longer-term loan. Right now, you had one that said 1 million for $8 million worth of borrowed. Can you explain that?
Yeah, and that's because when we're looking at maintenance, it's difficult for us to put like 20 years on that because we know that the product we're putting down is not a 20-year product. It's a seven-to-10-year product. So, we wanna back those up to make sure that whatever we're getting debt for is paying for that product for its useful life.
So, you're saying 1.4 million is a 10-year loan to get to 12 million, 12 and a half million? And then, tell me, is this, so let, let's say we did a two-inch mill in overlay. Do you, do you have an average of what you would, what you're budgeting, you know, to, to run all these and kinda project? What's a mile cost in, say, an inch and a half, two-inch mill in overlay?
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to defer. I don't have that number here with me now. I don't know if either one of these guys would have it. Kyle probably does.
Yeah, sure. So, that, that entire list of projects has a spectrum. And so, the, the easiest and, and simplest application of a slurry, somewhere around $3 a yard, then we're looking, you know, we get up into that regular chip seal, we're in about $6 a yard, square, square yard space. And then, by the time you're getting into a Cape Seal, you're somewhere around $12 a yard. Then we take that jump, the last of what I would consider a maintenance project being that overlay can be anywhere from $18 to $25 a yard, and that's probably the, the lar, that's probably the most detailed piece.
You have a, you have an average on how many square yards are in a, a mile? Let's say it's a five-lane arterial. Just trying to get an average per mile so that I can relate this back to the, if that's a 10-year fix, like what would you say a two-inch mill in overlay is in, in the longevity of that? How, how many years are we looking for out of that?
I think that's, it's cool that we have two podiums, but I think, I think we were looking at 10 years for that.
10 years?
Yes.
And, and you've got this number, this 1.4, to bring you 12 million? How many years is that, your, your, what's the length of that loan?
10.
10, okay. So, go ahead, Kyle.
About 3,500 square yards in a lane mile, so 5,280, 12 feet wide, divided by nine.
Is that a million dollars a mile?
Square feet to yards. 3,500.
Got an engineer with a calculator up here, we're in trouble.
I know.
So, really, even at $18 a yard, you're talking about a $70,000 project? 70,000 for a lane mile?
Times five?
Yep.
What'd you say, a lane mile?
70,000 times five. For a lane mile, times five is 315, 325,000.
Okay. Okay, well, since I'm making you do math at the podium, which is never good for any contractor or engineer.
Yes, sir.
The, the last thing that I had in my head was about a million dollars a mile, you know, 900,000. So, so we'll rerun those numbers, but, but the point that I'm driving at is, that's a 10-year fix. And so, hopefully. So, if we are prioritizing more of that type of critical care to our roads and, and we're comfortable with stretching that to, you know, 1.4 million gets us 12 and a half million. I know this council saw a lot of wisdom in building that into a plan. We, we didn't get to do it already because of the, the monies that we hadn't expended in the previous bond. And so, it set us back a full year, but, but in, in the plan going forward, I believe that to be the best way to, to catch up. And, and you still believe that as well, right? So...
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I might throw this out there too, and when we start talking about the details of these projects, some of them have different treatment types that are gonna require a different length on that, that bond. Some are gonna be seven, some are gonna be 10. But as we talked about it the other day, 10 is a great number for us because we're not hitting 10 now. Does that make sense? I mean, we're...
And you're running the balance, Donnie. I know you guys are trying to balance, well, if we get on this one early, we can get an extra five years of life out of this and, and so, we're, you know, we're not necessarily taking on the worst street first because you may have lost the base. So, I, I understand all that. I think that it's really good just for council to hear that we are back to driving, you know, a debt-funded continual investment program. And, and I think it's really important that, that our citizens here, like, that's a good plan and it's a plan that's been put forward and we just need to implement it. Now, you guys are the experts and you can implement it where you're getting the most coverage, you're getting the best bang for your buck. I don't think we have the luxury of, of looking at this and saying, in the next couple of years, we'd like to go to our voter with a $50 million bond. We need to handle this within our given budget and, and so, right now, 1.4 million is bringing us $12 million annualized and that is what you're basing all your numbers on, right?
That was the number that we discussed last week and as you know, you know, those change and by the time we get to budget, we'll have to reanalyze that, but that was the numbers we talked about last week.
And that's a 10-year look?
Correct.
Well, that's great. I, I don't know that we were...
Am I right? Make sure we're on the same page.
Sure. I, I thought, I thought we had gone a different direction, so I, I like that. Well, that, that helps me understand kinda where I'm at. Do you guys have any follow-up questions on any of the...
Yes. I mean, when you're looking at, 'cause the other, the other thing, I think we said, how much roadwork in an ideal situation with whatever money it would take? I mean, how much roadwork can we do in a year? Can we do that much more than $12 million worth averaged out or is that a pretty, is that a kind of a standard number? I mean, if we, if instead of 1.4, 1.8, we, you know, we'd be able to get exponentially more or where does 12 million fall in that range?
I think the answer I would give to that is that these are all data-driven decisions based on the data that we have saying that's what the need is right now. That need may change, but I think we have to consider what the public will tolerate as well as far as that work is concerned and how much we're, how many cones we have out on the road, because sometimes that's, that's painful as well for them. So, we think we were all comfortable in our discussions and there've been many, many, many meetings over this with the 12 million and being able to get that type of work done within the allotted time that it needs to be done.
And you're bringing this back in March?
We'll be bringing another discussion back to you in March and it will be more of what we just kinda talked about, the financial pieces of that. And then we'll also be coming back as well in April to start preparing for the budget. We figured this would probably be a, a two- or three-step process or whatever council desires for that.
Great. We appreciate the update. I, I would encourage council to remember we've got a good working budget and this is one of our biggest priorities. And so, as we're digging into the, the next year's budget and looking for those revenues, we also have worked really diligently to preserve some of our current year budget just for this. So, if we can, if we can get the confidence to get back to bond council and push this out, I think we wanna put the pedal all the way down for staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Donnie.
It's 4:40 right now. We're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute recess. Appreciate you guys all coming back then. Thank you. Thank you. Back into session. We're making some pretty good headway here. Item 7D is next on our list. Mr. Gagnon, if you don't mind coming up here, we're going to talk about a potential ordinance.
Thanks for having me today. We're getting ready to drive this thing to close, so I wanted to give council a quick update. And also, just to be sure, we're not, we don't start going fast in the wrong direction. So I want to get some feedback on the direction we're going. So I want to talk about approach first. This ordinance is a little different. And it was a bit of a struggle on the front. First, nobody's doing this, so there's not, there's not an example to follow.
Can you turn the mic over?
And second, is that better? I can eat the mic.
Yep.
From an approach standpoint, first, there's nobody doing this, so there wasn't a good example to look at. But also, we wanted to build an ordinance that gave the protections we're looking for, would stand the test of time, but was adaptable enough to deal with the crazy rate of change that we're seeing in technology. So you'll see that we've kind of broken it into three parts. The why, the foundation, if you will, that doesn't change, and then how we implement and give the flexibility, how we, how we operationalize this in a way that lets us adapt to technology changes. So the why, there's really four parts to the why. The city of Amarillo recognizes the immense benefits that digital technologies, including artificial intelligence, offer to the community in terms of efficiency, accessibility, and innovation. That's great. But the city also is committed to preserving traditional conservative principles that prioritize individual rights, privacy, and limited government while fostering responsible innovation. Number three is really the heart of it. A citizen's rights and freedoms exist in the digital space as they do in the physical space. Just because you're on a computer, you don't immediately relinquish your rights. You have the same rights. And then four, the Amarillo Principles for Dignified Digital Governance provide a foundational framework to ensure that technological advancements align with the values of dignity, transparency, and community engagement. That's the foundation. So the foundation is really, think about this as the Ten Commandments for how we do technology. It just doesn't change. This, this is the stable piece of the ordinance. The first being, we have a balanced approach to solutions. And I wanted that to be first because everyone looks at me and thinks, I probably believe tech is always the solution, and that's just not true. Sometimes you don't need AI, you just need a wrench. And technology is a business decision. Sometimes it's cheaper, faster, and a better decision to do it manually and not digitally. Two, we do humans, human-centered technology, so we prioritize dignity, well-being, and independence of our citizens in all our technological initiatives to serve people rather than control them. Three, we do resident-driven decision-making. We affirm the rights of residents to shape policies affecting their digital lives with transparent and respectful opportunities for feedback. Four, we equip for the digital age. That's empowering residents with voluntary programs that promote digital competence as essential to personal, that is essential to personal responsibility and family well-being. Five, we have a data minimalism and privacy approach. And essentially, that just means that we only collect what we need to deliver services. And that, and we do everything in our power to ensure that even when we do, we give citizens control over how that data is used. Six, we foster civil discourse. We want to use technology to, to encourage rather than discourage civic engagement and uphold the values of neighborly cooperation. Seven, we have accessible techno, technology for all. We want to make sure that our technology can be used by all our residents regardless of their abilities or how good they are at using technology, thus Emma and other tools. Eight, transparency and accountability. We want to maintain, we want to maintain publicly available documents of all of our initiatives that impact the person data stack, meaning any data that relates to a person and their transactions, and to hold the city accountable to its citizens. Nine, we'll protect digital rights. We uphold privacy, free speech, and access to information as a fundamental digital right. And 10, we do collaborative development, actively working with citizens in the co-development for digital solutions that align with our community values. These are our 10 commandments. They don't change. So how do we implement that? Section three really drives that. We start with annual updates to our digital dignity, rights, and privacy reports. So it's just a report. I wanted to make sure that as tech changes, policies get added, we're reporting back to this council and our citizens on an annual basis so we stay accountable. So the ordinance would require that we deliver an annual review and an update to the report to make sure that it still aligns with current technology and community needs. And those updates have to incorporate resident feedback, best practices, and compliance with ethical guidelines as outlined in the principles, which means this would be audited on an annual basis, and we would report on the results of that audit to our citizens as well as to this council. There's also a roadmap piece in it where we will actually give an update to council on here's what we see is changing, and this is what we're, what we've done about it this year to make sure that we haven't trampled on the rights of our citizens. B, our transparency requirements, requiring us that, that any initiatives that impact the person data stack have to be document, documented and available for public review, and that applies to our vendors as well. So we don't get away with just hiding a project inside a vendor. Vendors are accountable as well through us. Data protection standards, this requires us that we implement policies to minimize our data collection, safeguard any, any of the data that we do collect, and provide residents with clear options to control their data. So I'll give you an example. It's all about choice. Think about Emma. I am a person that would like to log in and have Emma remember what I did the last time I was on the site. That's just me. So when I come back to her and say, hey, remember when I asked you about this, this particular ordinance? I have a follow-up question. Some people don't want that. So we need to give those choices and put the power out of our hands and back into the residents. So a guy like Rich could say, yeah, I want, I want you to remember things. And somebody else could say, no, I don't, not only do I not want you to remember anything, I don't want you using any of my data to improve your model. That's what that really means. And then D is really speaks to, oh, and same for our vendors, right? We want to really push our vendors and, and in the purchasing process, take a look at how they use our data and what choices they're going to give our, our citizens. And then D gets to Ms. Vigil's point, right? All AI and digital systems have to undergo evaluations to identify bias. All AI has bias. There's no such thing as unbiased AI. What you have to do is evaluate it so you know what the bias is so that you can put the mitigations in place to, to offset those biases. Exactly. So the next piece is really the operational piece. There are two pieces that we'd, we'd want to do. One, we'd like to set up an advisory board, so that would be residents, experts in the field, legal, community representatives that will help us advise as we implement the ordinance. But also, they would be the first folks that we give our annual report to, so that we, we would give it to that board, we would get their feedback, we'd make that public. And then when we come to council, we come with a report, public feedback, board feedback, and you're getting the complete picture of, of what digital rights look like in Amarillo for the year. And then B, it really starts to dial into, we will publish that annual accountability report detailing all of our progress, our compliance, and any updates on our roadmap for the year ahead. It also holds me personally accountable, the CIO is accountable to produce that, that report and for implementing all policies, procedures, and auditing that, that is necessary to, to complete that report. Not unlike cybersecurity. I sign off on that every year and make myself accountable. This is no different. Section five, we're still, we're still doing some work on that, and you'll see violations. It's important that everyone across the city, all leaders know that violation of the ordinance or associated policies to ensure that the city's compliance with the ordinance could result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. Of course, this has to run through legal. I haven't taken it to legal. I want to make sure we're directionally good first. And then whistleblower protections, protecting citizens and employees who see violations from retaliation if they report them, and also establishing a way to, a reporting mechanism to report them anonymously without fear of retribution. And you'll see right now that's still the biggest difference between the ordinance that you, you received from public last week and, and ours. Need to sit with legal and kind of work through what, what the violation options are, and we'll, we'll firm that up as we go forward. And then finally, our next steps are to sit down with legal, go through the view, the review. Obviously, I don't have all the legal language associated with the ordinance yet. I wanted to, to get the philosophy and direction done. Then we'll really start pushing feedback. This will post on the new digital rights section of our website. So the draft will be up, actually up there in draft form so people can see it. We'll get it out on social. I want as much feedback from our, our residents as I can possibly get. We're an open book, so we're doing this in an open way. We'll get this up as soon as, assuming that council's good with the direction, we'll get the draft up on the site so people can take a look at it. And then we'll do more in-person meetings with the goal of having our first reading the last council of March, and then the first council of April, and we'll be done.
Questions? Counsel? No? Okay. So the collaboration request, I think, is, is settled in here. For me, one, it's annualized, which is really good. So we're not going to create an ordinance, put it on a shelf, and then never follow it or reflect to it or pretend it doesn't exist, you know, past your three minutes at the podium. Two, you've got your committee that will be comprised of us, citizens, experts, whatnot. So I feel like you are definitely addressing that. Consequences for damages. So I would assume that if you have an ordinance on the books, and I'm a citizen and I can prove damages, that ordinance puts me in front of the municipal judge, right? Or potentially...
Those are the questions I really have for, for legal. I want to sit down and do legal review and see what's enforceable. It's a little different because we've created an ordinance. This isn't like an ordinance where, where we're doing the height of offense or how many chickens you can have. Typically, ordinances are outward-facing. This one is inward-facing. We're holding our, we're saying we're going to hold ourselves accountable. So there's some, there's some legal questions that I need to, to sort through on what that looks like when it's inward and not outward.
So can we look at maybe like council has to abide by Open Meetings Act requirements? So those are inward-facing.
Sure.
We know if three of us get together and we start discussing a vote, you know, without calling a meeting, we're breaking that. We face potential fines and even jail time if you get over to, I guess it'd be the county at that. So, so is this something that legal can look at as a misdemeanor?
I don't know that. I don't have the answer to that yet. That's, that's what I was doing next is sitting down with legal.
But I would assume that that...
Getting a better understanding.
Okay. I would assume that that's what, you know, some of the citizens are looking for, is a little bit of teeth in this, that we all put this on the books knowing that there is, there is a certain consequence and that it's spelled out if we misuse your data or if somebody else comes in and grabs it. So is there anything else that you know of?
There, there are some, there are some similarities if you start to think about cybersecurity. So if you look at that, at liability when it comes to cybersecurity, I, I sign off every year saying, we're doing these things, right? And if there was a breach, and I've done those things, and there was a breach anyway, I'm not going to have the liability because I've done, if, it's a brand-new vulnerability, there's nothing that we could do. We did everything in our power. We did what, what we said we were going to do. We had good cyber gene, cyber hygiene, then I'm, I'm sort of protected. If I didn't, then, then I could be personally liable for, for, for my, my lack of action.
So willingness from staff and your, your part to try to apply some of those same consequences, that you're already, those liabilities, you're already incurring on, on cyber.
Exactly. And that's where, there's a lot of similarities. When you, when I use the term person data stack, that's really taking the same approach that you take for cyber, cybersecurity. We're just breaking down the data into, into different categories and then addressing those individually, just like we do in cybersecurity.
Okay. That takes care of my questions. Nothing further for Mr. Gagnon? Yes, sir. The advisory board, tell me a little bit more about that. Like, what would they do? How often would they meet? What, what, what would that look like?
We're thinking that they would meet on a quarterly basis for updates, so that way we're, we're giving back to the, the board, okay, here's what we've done the last quarter. It's really, it's really to gather their feedback on, on what the concerns of the public are and to ensure that we're, we're working against those. And then they would also be the first to get the annual report. So our initial thought was that'd be a quarterly, a quarterly board. The other thing that we were discussing is having The other thing that we were discussing is having kind of a mix, having some residents, but also having some legal and technical experts on the board as well, so that we're also discussing futures and what they see, not just what the residents' concerns are, but how as technology is changing, what are the things we need to be thinking about from a digital rights perspective?
I don't know. It just makes me think as we start this and we're navigating this, and I'd lead this up, I mean, obviously, this would be a council, but, you know, there are certain boards and commissions that council, a council person serves on.
Sure.
And maybe as this is getting started, just to keep some continuity between council and what's going on with this, it might be, maybe a council member would be maybe on that. Maybe it's not permanent.
Sure.
But I would certainly think as we're kind of navigating how to begin this, just because it is so important that we roll this out right, that maybe there's a line between council and us. I would be glad to nominate council member Tips for that role, but no, I think, I just think it may be something that might be worth, just in the beginning, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and there's good, you know, communication and feedback. So council is kind of, you know, aware of this, at least in the beginning stage.
I would welcome that.
Anything further? I figured you'd nominate Sherlin since he wasn't here, but I mean, you took a shot over there.
He probably knows more about technology than most of us up here, I must admit.
Rich, I know I said it earlier, but I appreciate your leadership on this. You're leading this, you're driving this. These are your 10 commandments. These are your, you've been in multiple engagements with citizens, friendly and not so friendly, right? And we're making progress. And the citizen concern is real. And so what I appreciate the most is that you understand that it's real and that you're not patronizing, you are diligently trying to work for it. So I ask our citizens to understand, nothing is totally comprehensive. This is foundational. We're trying to pour a foundation that we can build on. So we hope you limit it to that in your expectations, and then I think we can deliver. So building a fence, not a 14-story building, you know, so like, let's start with the foundation if we can. Rich, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Rich.
We'll get it back in March, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, look forward to it.
Thanks.
Moving us along out of 7D, we're on 7E. This is now being called the Sunset Committee. The other title that we had put up there was Codes and Standards Task Force. And so today's goal with this, as I kind of walk us into this, is I'd like to define, put up some guardrails of kind of a vision that I have for this in designing and producing a citizen-led committee. So a lot of the questions that we're going to have is, well, what are we going to look at first? Who's going to do this? Who's going to do that? So I think a lot of what I'm going for is as much as we can put the guidelines in place, we're trying to put together a citizen-led committee. So for an example, today we have seven, is it seven or eight, boards and commissions that are applicable here? And we would take, was there seven, Mr. Freeman? Eight?
Eight.
So as an example, I think one really good idea is that this committee would start with those who are already the chair of a board, say P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning. That chair would be able to serve on this. Now, they could decline if they needed to, so it's not an obligation, but I think we'd like to offer to them first. Then, once we get those individuals on, I think those in that committee, along with perhaps council, I'm thinking, just like Councilman Simpson, that this would be a good one for, one, council, if not, two, to serve on, to really help get this off the ground and make sure that it's productive. The last thing we need to do is schedule a meeting to have another meeting. The best thing and the first thing we need to do is to remove any red tape that we're all having to walk around, over, under, or carry around. And so this has a lot of potential, but only if it's done correctly. The third thing that we could do, once we get those individuals placed, is if we select one topic or two topics to start with, my favorite one to pick on is the IECC, Energy Conservation Code. And so in that, then we would be looking at trying to fund this with a small amount of money to be able to go and hire an expert. I think that where you really get to is with either those funded experts through our dollars or funded through other ways. So there are federal grants that a lot of these individuals already work for, and the more they help you, the more they can bill. And so there's a way there to procure an expert that can speak to the things that we need to deal with. Codes and standards on the black and white always come across as like, that's what it says. But then the application of those codes and the application of those standards is always interpreted. And what we want to do is, we want to leverage that interpretation the best we can to protect life safety, but then also to cultivate a business-friendly environment. And so you can take the best life safety protocol, and you can turn something into a maze that no one can ever get through and nobody participates. Now, are you protecting life? Absolutely. But are you preventing business? Absolutely. And so the balance in this is what we all struggle for and what we all want, comes down to common sense practices, logic, and good communication. So council, what I'm driving at here today is, I think this is well worth the pilot program. I would love to put some, you know, guardrails on it where we could say, let's at least have one council member, or if we wanted multiple council, to serve on this. And then we would also hopefully equip this with the ability of, once they decide, okay, this is our task, this is what we're going for first, then they have the ability to come to council and ask for an expenditure to go and hire a professional. Staff is going to love that, by the way. The last thing staff wants is for us to get out there, read something that we think it means one thing, come in and say, well, we're getting rid of all this, and then their job constantly be to come back to that committee and say, here's why you can't do that. Here's why you can't do that. When we have certified professionals, engineers, experts in those fields, they're able to say, here's why we do this, and this works in this other municipality. Here's best practices, just like everything else we do. So the goal is to work alongside of staff, to work with them, to make their job easier and more efficient as well, streamlining the things that they've got to hold the rest of the community accountable to, while enforcing good logical common sense barriers that we all want to have everybody climb over for life safety. Councilman Tips, I know you were looking at me there, so tell me what you don't like. Let's just start there.
Okay. So maybe I'm a little confused. Like, you bring up the energy codes, and I agree. Are there energy codes that Amarillo enforces that the state or the federal does not? I mean, I guess I'm not understanding that, do we have leeway on a local level to go in and say, we don't like this, we're not going to hold our builders accountable for this because it just makes no sense?
Yes.
We have the leeway to do that.
We do. So like, I may say it wrong, but I think we're at the 2015 Energy Code or 16. State has done some great due diligence, and they are holding themselves back. I think the 22 is what everybody else has been asked to move for, and then I almost feel like 24 is not even something that they're looking at. They're going to go straight to the 26. And if you look at the 26 codes, they are impractical. And so the state of Texas is looking at this saying, you know, you're trying to kill and crush small business. You're trying to kill anything based on climate change or on green, you know, Green New Deal policies, all of this apparatus that's working, the state of Texas is already protecting you locally. However, as a home rule city, you also have the ability and the latitude to work within different codes and standards, adopt things that, I'm going to say this wrong, are we reaching for, which is the same as Denver? So why is Amarillo, Texas, part of the same energy code conservation as Denver? I mean, their climate's nothing like ours. And so what we deal with here, they don't deal with in Denver. And so at one point, it got so foolish, they took a non-climatized substrate, dropped it in the ground, they took a non-climatized piece of dirt, which is the land, they said, insulate the outside of your footing, which is a non-climatized, you know, substrate. So a piece of insulation between concrete and dirt is not going to have an insulation value.
But we have the ability to change that on a local level.
We do, yes. And we would want to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I hear you, and I don't disagree. So I just, I guess my ignorance is that we have the ability, that if the state adopts, let's say, the 2024 codes, we have the ability as a home rule state to say, not us, we're not going to do it.
At a certain cost. And so Mr. Freeman may can speak to this way better than I can. I know building safety definitely can. But we have ISO ratings, we have insurance ratings, we have grant criteria, we have things that we want. And so it is a dance that you need to do with your partner. So we don't want to throw the book out on everything, and then we can't qualify for anything. So fire hydrants are a great example. You know, the state says we'd like a fire hydrant that produces 1,500 gallons a minute over 400 feet. Well, great, we think that's life safety, we're doing that. If we don't enforce that, which many municipalities don't, then our rating may go down, which you're familiar with that, you know, house, that homeowner that's paying a little bit more for that homeowner's insurance. But then we also have AAA borrowing criteria and all sorts of other things on our bond rating. And so it's a matrix or a metric that we're working within. And the worst thing about this is if I ask a straightforward question about one item, I don't get a straightforward answer back. Sure, you can get rid of that. What I get is, I don't know. I mean, you know, we may never get to borrow another dollar. Okay, well then, let's just do everything, you know, and let's just not be able to build a structure in town. I mean, that is where you'll end up if you don't constantly dance with that partner. It's a push and pull. And so we need those experts.
Okay, and I don't, I'm not saying we don't. I guess I don't understand the guidelines of this thing, right? I mean, you understand, I mean, I'm on board to be efficient and all of those things.
Sure.
But I guess that's what you're talking about with guardrails, like, I guess we're going through, as well as getting rid of old codes. Like, hey, let's go through this, do we even need these anymore? So we can get rid of those. I understand that. I guess the other side is what I don't.
Right.
I just don't understand, I guess a better definition of what this thing is. I think it's so arbitrary that it's, I just don't know what it is. I mean, I kind of know what it is.
Right.
But there's a lot that I don't know.
No, I think you're being very intelligent in questioning, because I think where you don't know things, then fear creeps in and speculation, and we lose that vision. So this would be created to shoot at certain targets. I don't have those targets evaluated because I'm not pushing that target. I also am aware of, you know, DOGE and everything else that's coming down from the federal government, they are going to place some targets in front of you. You are going to have some EPA rules or guidance that changes. And so where do we go here locally when we have, let's say, our SW3P program, where with our building community, once again, we're telling them, hey, you've got to put up all of these barriers, you need dust control measures, you know, or else we have to fine you. Well, when the EPA is no longer the teeth in that, the state may very well have a delay in how they implement those new rules and procedures. I've seen government have massive delays in how things go from the federal level to the local level. So this would be twofold. It would be reactive, where you have a sunset committee that's already spun up of local leaders that are experts in their field, that can react promptly to changes in the federal government and state government, which we should expect, in my opinion. Then you also have the latitude to allow them to go out and cherry pick, target the things that they feel are the biggest hindrances, outdated issues, red tape in current codes and standards.
So here's my concern a little bit. So I guess with the, what, Andrew sent, which I appreciate, the, what are these, the board chairs, right? Which makes sense. But if we get citizens, I feel like that they come in with like an agenda, right? Like, if there's an insurance code that I want different, I'm like, you know what? Pick me. I want to be on that, because you know what? I don't like the way Amarillo handles whatever. Like, I want to change this. So I come in with an agenda, I'm there, I mean, maybe y'all don't know about insurance as much as I do, and I'm like, guys, we've got to change this. This is bad. And I pitch my deal, and you're like, well, I don't know, Don did a pretty good job. It sounds kind of bad. Like, sure, let's folk get rid of that. Like, whew, okay, I'm done. Hey, I'm done with this committee. I got done with it. That would be my fear a little bit, or my concern, that if we create this, you've just got to be super careful with somebody that doesn't come in with a presupposed agenda that's like, man, I'm just getting in here to make things better for me. Now, it may be better for everybody.
I agree with what you're saying, but I also would apply that same concern to every person sitting up here on the dais. So every citizen's going to have the same concern that anybody running for office is going to show up with an agenda, and they're just going to want to get in there and fix their one thing. I think you very well outlined like our concern as with government or governance. Now, that doesn't mean that nobody runs for office and that we don't try to serve. So I think the same self-imposed public servant attitude is what you're looking for, and we're going to have to deal with that. It's a very legitimate concern. That's why I wouldn't propose to put 10 builders on this committee.
Or 10 insurance guys.
Or 10 insurance guys and expect to get something that's good for the whole community. All you've done is just helped one sect. I also would not want to withhold this opportunity to move forward and change nothing, because I'm afraid that somebody may show up with an agenda. I think we should assume that people are going to show up with their agenda, and then it's our responsibility to set guidelines. So one guideline is, I believe that this committee could serve one year at a time, and that would be a maximum year. So you're motivated to work hard, you're wanting to get things done, and then you're out and somebody else is taking your position. That way, we don't get hung up on one party or one side.
Okay. So to be clear, so we would task, because I would like to think that builders would come forward and say, guys, this is terrible. We've got to get rid of this. Well, that comes to us, right? Calls Les, says, man, I'm a builder. This enforcement of this dust control thing is ridiculous. And Les is like, I don't know, it sounds kind of ridiculous to me. He loops you in, we talk about it, we get rid of it. I mean, that could happen, yes?
Hasn't. So every time, every time some people have come to me and said, hey, we've got these issues, and I say, okay, let me work on this. So let's take, for example, an electrical issue. You've got an electrical code issue, it's in the code, it's already been adopted, and so as a council member, I go and I talk to building safety. I don't have the community behind me pushing for that. I've got one person that's hung up, and you get stuck in the minutia, that individual goes back to business as usual. Consequently, we never change anything. And the thing that does happen, that I am very aware of, is that large companies that hold patents pay lobbyists lots of money to go and lobby for certain things that are getting put in these codes and standards. They are getting funneled to the state, and they are being implemented on you. So there's a holder of a GFCI patent somewhere that now has so many billion dollars worth of revenue that we all have to pay for because they've got that and they pushed on the lobbyists. There's no pushback coming back from the local level. And so do we need GFIs on top of GFIs on top of breakers? Like, no, we do not. But are we constantly, every year, getting pushed further and further down this road? We are. The only way to change this, I think, is with a committee that is empowered to do this, because I've been here almost four years now, haven't got one code removed.
Well, why? I mean, so this committee, put it together with these guys and citizens as well, their job would be to do exactly what I just said, to go through, they don't have the authority to change the code. They would have to come to us, present it to us, we change the code. Yes?
Correct. And keep in mind, you'd have staff that's serving on this as well, and staff is then acknowledging like, yes, we see this and we are willing to take this, we've evaluated your AAA bond rating, we've evaluated your ISO rating, no problem. And then there could be an unadoption, or there could be a removal. Now, hopefully, we're not sowing the weeds that we're going one code at a time. Hopefully, we are working at a, you know, a tier and a level up where we are removing a swath of things that is in the way for, you know, but here's what I would say, we all came together and we said, our vision is make Amarillo more business-friendly, right? Create a business-friendly environment. How are we doing this if we're not willing to adjust codes and standards and to work towards the day-to-day interactions that you're having to make? So this committee has no authority outside of this council. They've been empowered to go, you know, take the challenge, do the research, bring back the solution, along with staff. But now you have a collaboration between staff, your citizen committee, perhaps a paid expert, and then council can take these actions.
I think it'd be easier to understand if we just had a clear set of targets we were trying to hit, if that makes sense. I know you talked about the energy code. trying to hit, if that makes sense. I know you talked about the energy code. I'm trying to see as black and white as I can, you know, like Parks and Rec, you know, like that person or animal welfare. I mean, they wouldn't really have any say as far as like the energy code. And so, do you have any other sort of targets that you'd be trying to hit at?
I do. Councilman Tips, were you, do you want to jump in there before we go?
No, I was just told I need to talk into the mic. So, I was correcting that problem.
Um, I, I do have some other targets that I would like to go towards that have to do with the business-friendly interactions. Ideally, going back to Councilman Tips concern, I do have an agenda. Like, I want to make Amarillo easier to, to do business in. I want people to say like, I love working in Amarillo, I'd totally build another building there. You know, I've been on the receiving end for almost four years of people saying, you know, if I'd known it was going to be this hard, I would have never taken the job. I'll never build another building in your city. Like, it's awful. And, and we have made drastic improvements over in building safety. And we are doing so much better. But we are constantly tripping over more and more codes and standards in order to satisfy those customers. And it's going to get worse, I believe, as DOGE continues to do its job. So, I like the guideline of reactive because I think they will set those targets up. One of the easiest things to go after is the energy code conservation. The next easy thing to go after would be building safety and some of the, the targets that are over there. And, and I would be glad to bring back from, you know, maybe Chief Shoals, what are the things that you'd like to see changed? What are the ways that we could make your job and your life easier in everything building safety? Now, planning and zoning, that wouldn't be my target, but I can tell you that there, there's a lot of stuff there in, in how we, we function within our community and what we hold people to. The problem is this. As government, what we say is, is, and forgive me, I'm not saying this about our staff, but in government, a lot of times what they say, not y'all, is we need to create a box that's big enough for everybody to fit in. Because we can't trust that our individual employees can understand the latitude that's needed to handle individualized issues. So, we create a box and we tell you, you got to fit in it. And then that box comes with criteria. So, in building safety, it's like saying everybody's building a hospital. And so, we run the same guy who's doing, you know, a pergola in his backyard through the process that we run the, the architecture firm through that's building a hospital. And it's very frustrating. And so, a lot of what we have at council is the ability to manipulate, and I choose that word carefully, manipulate some of the codes and standards based on how you get classified. And that's what Johnny Shoals is doing a great job over there. He's making sure that he's not running everybody through the same box. But we're, we're stumbling over ourselves on energy code conservation. We're stumbling over ourselves on what I believe is, is some of our erosion control barriers and some of the other things that we're, we have in place. Now, not everything can be affected, and I'm willing to have a failure where we come back and TCEQ says, yep, you got to enforce it. Okay, we looked at it. Great. Not going to get it done. Something we've got to do, don't have any other options.
Well, maybe to Josh's point, that we, that we pick some targets and do that, and then we're done until a new target arises. I don't know that it's, you know, being so broad is, is the only thing that concerns me to be effective and efficient. That we have this committee. To your point, you've got a few things to look at. Great. Let's target it. Let's get, let's go after it. I mean, and there might be restaurant owners, right, that come in and say, listen, some of these codes are terrible. Like, we're getting dinged or we shouldn't have to do this. Well, great. We'll look at it and maybe change them, maybe not change them. I don't know, you know, depends on what makes sense. But I think if we've got targets, I guess my hindrance from not wanting to move forward is just, it's, it's undefined.
Yeah.
Like, it just, so I agree with Councilman Craft that maybe we have some targets to shoot and then get the next ones, and then get the next ones.
Well, I am definitely okay with that approach. I think that that's incremental, it's kind of one inch at a time. I think I am trying to, to put something out that the, the staff can buy into a little bit more.
For sure.
Because what I don't want is us for picking a target to shoot at and then the staff feels like they're getting shot at. And that's not what we want. We want a collaboration of how can we work with you. So, hopefully, you guys are hearing what we're saying. But, but I would be great to take guidance from this council and then to try to take this on moving it in a very specific, specified direction. Yes, sir?
You know, I agree, having, having focus and say exactly what do we want to accomplish of that? If you're talking about identifying things that people perceive are real and making it difficult to do business, I think we ought to look at that for two reasons. One, we might have problems that exist that we need to fix. Or two, sometimes people just want to be heard. And I think in both of those things, I think you could really do something because I've heard the same thing that you have, that it is difficult to do business. As you kind of dig into it, sometimes you realize, well, there is a reason why it's difficult, but other times not. So, I think if we're focusing on, to me, I think anything that we can do to make more business friendly, I, I think would be great for the community. And, and we, we look in maybe some specific low-lying fruit areas that we think we can make the, with, with the work on, that we can make the biggest progress in making it easier to do business and get people that are focused and committed on, on that area.
Would you guys be comfortable if maybe I tapped Grayson and maybe Andrew together? So, we have our city manager and deputy, so that it's not me just running out there picking something that I, I may want a agenda, right? And, and then would you guys be comfortable giving us a little time to prep it and bring it back? I could bring back something that's very specific. It would categorize like what we're shooting at. It would show the benefits. It would also show the potential like, well, we may not get here because of there. It would be able to represent staff's buy-in. So, they would have an opportunity to say, can't look at that, can't do this. But then you guys are allowing me to drive and, and I'm willing to, to get in the backseat. But if you'll let me drive, I will.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with you having the knowledge and expertise you have in the building industry. That's a big deal for our builders and our developers. We need to make us easy to do business with. So, it's like, I don't mind, I mean, when I say with an agenda, I have no problem with that because I agree. We've just got to make the city easier to do business with. I have no, so if it is that, like Les is saying that, you know, some low-lying fruit that you're very well aware of, I have no, I have no problem with that being a target because we all know that that's a problem. We've all heard that from builders and developers. It's like, sheesh, I mean, this is, you know, I just had one recently. Like, this is crazy. I mean, we're having to jump through these hoops and do these things. If we can make ourselves where it makes sense without jeopardizing safety or anything else, then we need to do it. So, I have no problem with you having the expertise you have to say, let's, let's, let's take that out quick, okay?
I hear what you're saying.
Yep. I agree. The only other thing I would add is when we're looking at the different type of backgrounds and maybe a little more specific on who serves on that board. If that makes sense. So, like, you know, when we're over there, you know, if it's the energy code or whatever, if there's any recommendations as to a specific background of a committee member.
So, rather than creating a longstanding committee, what you guys are saying is you're more comfortable with a task force that would be spun up for a certain operation, for a lack of a better word. And then we could, we could place those people on there that have that expert criteria, want to serve. And then, once that job is accomplished, then, you know, task force either served its purpose and we don't do it again, or we're able to do it again, maybe council weighs in on the next thing, or hopefully, our citizens are bringing things of, you know, this is the issue, can we work on that?
I think so. I mean, they would, I think that specific background would help drill in more as to what more of the specific issues are. And they know what to look for in the change in the codes or things of that nature.
And I think it involves the citizens too. They have some input.
Real good. Do you have anything else to add? Okay. So, what I'm hearing is, don't put a bunch of State Farm agents on a committee.
We're not nearly intelligent enough.
No.
Not at all.
We love all of our State Farm agents. Okay. Well, I, I think I'm taking a lot of direction on this. Let me ask Mr. Path, do you have anything you want to add to this in the direction?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll bring it back when it's ready. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to bring that out. Item 7F, you have anything for future agenda? Anybody want to add?
You know what? There's something that came up today, and I, I talked to Donnie after this. And this is literally something just maybe to talk about. I think Fisher brought it up as well, is maybe the garage. I know we've got a, we've got a look at, or the parking garage, the building we've got north of us. I know we have part of our working budget left, that that might be something to look at in a discussion item, you know, just take a look and see. I know like today, I had complaints already that the parking lot was full, you know, people coming in for the open house. I mean, I know it was kind of a big event that we had that's typically, we don't have a lot of big events here at City Hall, but that was a pretty big draw, that the parking is an issue. And then depending on what we do over here with this, that could lead to some bigger problems. So, I don't know if that's a worthy discussion to have with everybody up on the dais to say, hey, what would it take? And I think we talked, a million dollars, I think, was the last one to get that building next door with ramps and striped and that kind of deal to where we had some parking over here.
Okay. So, I definitely would not speak for staff, but I believe that is something that's still pretty fresh and could be updated and brought back pretty easily. So, I-
We could bring you something back on that pretty quick.
Okay. Yeah, we'll ask for that one. Anything else? Okay. Moving into the consent agenda, do I have anything on the consent agenda that any council member would like to pull off? Nothing. I'm going to ask to pull item 8L for discussion. So, Ms. Casey, I know you're here. So, appreciate you being here for that. Do I have anything from council other than that? Would request a motion removing 8L for discussion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with exception of 8L.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 4-0 vote. Item 8L, I would ask, I guess, Mr. Path, are you comfortable if, if we ask Mrs. Stoughton to come forward or, okay? All right. How are you, ma'am?
Good. How are you?
Good. We're doing good. So, thank you for, for being here for this. I want to start by kind of laying a little bit of groundwork as to the concern that I have for this as a council member. And then I also want to start on a positive note of the other things that have, that are, that are in this agenda that have been funded. And so, we are in complete and total support of everything that you do, even though sometimes we don't even want to talk about some of the stuff that you do. And some of these items in here are for the things that we need in public health. We need a good public health director and, and we need good collaboration. So, I'm, I'm laying that groundwork because I want you to hear me say that I in, in no way, in this council, in no way are against anything that you're accomplishing. And I think we're walking that out with our budget as well because you guys are, are seeing what we're pushing for on like the women's health clinic. These gentlemen may not know, but like dentistry, I would love to, to see something there and, and, you know, taking care of kids. So, we want to keep making progress. My concern on 8L, I had asked for the immunization renewal and breakdown. So, I see several items that are on there. You and I have had multiple conversations about the COVID-19 vaccine and its difference from a lot of the other vaccines. You know, you understand some of the public's concerns with all of that. So, I'm not trying to take us backward four or five years, but what I am trying to do is move us forward with an understanding of exactly what do these monies go for. And then, like true informed consent and how good a job you, you are doing over there and making sure that the public is getting exactly what they, they believe they're getting. So, would you mind to tell me this $261,000, how much of its labor, how much of its material, what all you're going to do with that money?
Sure. So, and I'm sorry about my voice today, but so, all of the, this particular grant, all of it goes for staff and supplies. We, this, this, this grant does not pay for vaccinations. The vaccines that are used in our clinic for this particular grant are supplied to us by the state of Texas through this Texas Vaccine for Children program.
Okay. So, the actual material is provided in a different grant?
Well, the, the vaccinations are provided to us by the state of Texas. So, the state purchases the vaccine and then we order that through the state. The money that is supplied through this grant pays for the staff and any supplies that we might need, syringes, office supplies, you know, that type of general supplies.
Okay. That's very helpful. What is your latitude with the staff? Like, do you have to spend all 261,000 on immunizations? Or, or can you utilize that money to do other things for the good, you know, towards public health?
So, this grant can only be used for immunizations.
So, you track probably education, you know, everything from the actual admin, follow-up, everything through that, right?
Correct. So, two of our staff members participate in the actual, in our clinic in giving of the vaccines. And then our other staff members manage the Texas Vaccine for Children program. So, they support our other clinics. So, there, we have several clinics in town, different pediatricians' offices, our hospitals, different pharmacies that are enrolled in the Texas Vaccine for Children program. And so, they, this, the team here supports that, that, those different clinics to make sure that they're in compliance with the Texas Vaccine for Children program, making sure that the temperature in the refrigerators are at the appropriate temperature to make sure that the vaccine stays safe, that they're ordering through the, the way that the Texas Vaccine for Children program requires vaccine to be ordered, kind of all of that. The, the state of Texas audits all of the providers each year. And so, we're able to go out and kind of before each provider is audited, make sure that they have all of the, the requirements met so that they're successful with their audit. So, we serve in that capacity.
That's great. Council, if y'all have any questions, feel free. Yes, sir?
Kathy, the question I'd have is, you know, for the, the staff that goes out and administers this, how big are we, you know, with the vaccines and things that we're finding out? You know, there's a lot of adverse reactions. There's some, right, to them. How big are, are they, or how well educated are they on like the informed consent? And then when they are out there, are they educating those, whether it's physicians or with the staff or themselves or whatever, for the, the mothers that come in on that informed consent? I think that's our biggest deal. You know, we've talked about the COVID vaccine as well, like we talked about before, but that's a big deal, right? People need to understand there are some, you know, risks to taking that. So, that would be our, I don't know, a concern that we would have, that everybody's just well-informed.
Absolutely. And our clinic provides informed consent for every clinical service that's provided. In fact, we provide clinic informed consent above what's required by the state of Texas.
So, they, like, what does that look like? I mean, do they go through, do they read? Like, like, how, what does informed consent look like on a vaccine, something like that?
So, we provide information ahead of time before the visit, which allows the parent to read through any, all of the information. And then we provide any, any length of time that, that the parent would need to ask any questions or until they would feel comfortable.
So, it's sent to them like a?
When they come in to the clinic.
Oh, when they come in.
And, and typically, people don't come to the health department to not get vaccinated. Like, they've already made the choice to be vaccinated before they come to the health department. It's not like a pediatrician's office or a different doctor's office where you're coming for your well-child visit and then we're talking about vaccinations. Like, people have pre-made the choice to be vaccinated and they come in and ask for it.
Sure.
When they come to the clinic.
I guess my concern is that, you know, we would want our community, they're coming to you guys because you're professionals.
Absolutely.
Right? That they, they may have made that decision and that's a great decision for them. But to, to trust the professionals to, that they come to, to say, hey, you need to be aware, there are some things, I mean, with the studies that have come out, you know, all these things.
Absolutely.
So, even though they've made their mind up to say, hey, I want this, I still think it's our job as, as community leader in this area to say, you know, there, there are some risks here. I mean, so even though they've made their mind up, is that what?
We do. We talk about the, you know, the, the most common side effects that would occur and what you can do to alleviate those. We have a sheet that's called the after the shots that we give to families to make sure that they're, that they can provide, you know, the appropriate dosage of Tylenol or Motrin to their kiddo. And so, we try to make sure that they, they leave with the most appropriate information and that all of their answers, their questions are answered.
Where does that information come from? I'm sorry. Where's, I'm trying to keep you where you're not having to talk so much.
No, it's fine. The Immunization Action Coalition. So, it's the, it's immunize.org. And so, that's where- And so that's where, um, most of those, the standard forms come from, which is where, uh, we, we get a lot of information that we print out for families.
Okay. And I would, yeah, I would say what like Rich said, that all AI is biased. I think that there's some organizations that are biased, but I know that y'all have a choice to choose. And I guess our concern with this grant is that any strings attached to it that force us to do things a certain way that maybe, maybe we don't want to do them that way. Does that make sense? And it, it might be the source of information that we get, you know, so, okay.
Those are good questions. I think, you know, where we're both driving is it's, it's liberty in the truest sense of it. I want to protect your liberty to go to the public health clinic and get your vaccine. I want to protect another person's liberty to say that they think that that one type of vaccine is different. It's harmful, no one should ever take it. It's liberty, right? So we, we're not trying to take away anything. We are trying to make sure that some of the guidelines in true informed consent are followed. I, I'm glad to hear that from you and I appreciate that. Let me ask you a question about maybe good care practices, because we have a public health authority who's a pediatrician. And, and so, you know, in, in, as a, as a parent of a newborn, you know, I have the option to vaccinate that child with however many, you know, different at one time, uh, or, you know, space those out. And I, and, and so for me as a parent, I, I felt like there was less risk in spacing those out. Is that something that you're doing over there at the health clinic as well? Where you guys, do you have the latitude to, to discuss and to help coach people through there? Or, or is it just administrative?
So we do have latitude. Our, um, our clinic's protocol is to give all of the vaccines that are required at that visit or recommended at that visit. But if a, if a parent wants to talk about a delayed schedule or wants to talk about an alternative, then we're able to have that conversation.
Okay. Councilman Tips?
Our goal is to make sure the kids are safe and we want to do that however's most comfortable for the family.
Right. I, I know that we live in a community of, uh, excellent caregivers, doctors, nurses, first responders. Do no harm is definitely, um, everyone's goal. And I know that you carry that same goal. And so once again, in no way insinuating that, that we're not, but also being willing to have a little bit of an uncomfortable conversation to make sure that we're putting everything out there that we can. If you're choosing to go through an immunization schedule, um, one, are you educated? And two, have, have we fulfilled that service to the best of our ability as a, a government entity? And so, uh, appreciate your candor on some of these. I see Mr. Path reaching for the microphone.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, and Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, my analysis of this grant, looking at it from similar grants is that, so I think, Mary, to your point there, it is, is recognizing there's liberty in the community to decide to or to not get a vaccine. The goal of the grant here is to make sure we provide a, a qualified, safe, well, well-informed, uh, uh, this, this, this good, good place to receive a vaccination. I think that's the point of, of, of the funding here is to make sure we have, we have qualified staff who know what they're doing, the right equipment, the right environment, the right safety protocols in place that when, when it is given, if the person chooses to give it, it's been given in the right way. I think that's the point of the grant, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you both.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, council asked for a motion on eight L, if you would, please.
I move to approve item eight L as presented.
Second. Motion and a second on eight L, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to non-consent, appreciate you guys hanging with us for another full agenda. Item nine A has been completed. We will move forward to item nine B. Mr. Freeman, are you taking this one?
Yes, sir. So I won't go into a, a lot of detail. This is a follow-up item based on your discussion with Skylar Gallup in late January regarding the, um, Proposition Two that's approved at the state level in November 2023. That allows for the local option election, uh, for Advalore and property tax exemption ranging from 50 to 100% for qualifying childcare facilities. It would only apply to facilities that are licensed by the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. They also have to participate in the Texas Rising Star Program and also serve at least 20% of children receiving, uh, subsidized childcare through the Texas Workforce Commission. So we've done the analysis on how many, uh, could potentially apply for the program. We have approximately 119 facilities participating in the Texas Rising Star Program. Looking at the analysis, um, only about 53 of the 119 would possibly qualify. That's because the, the remainder are either are a nonprofit status or taking advantage of another exemption that they qualified for. So it lowers the impact to the tax base if y'all were to consider a, uh, local tax exemption. So we have drafted an ordinance, um, for your consideration today with basically a fill in the blank for a motion, uh, to consider anywhere from 50 to 100%. Based on the number, um, there's approximately seven million in taxable value, uh, that this could apply to. 50% would be about a $13,000 revenue, uh, impact. And then the 100% would be approximately 27,000. So minimal, uh, impact in the grand scheme of things. Potter County, uh, as was mentioned last meeting, has a 75% uh, exemption adoption, adopted. Canyon is at 100%, the city of Canyon. And then just some, um, other example cities that were provided me today, Fort Worth, Arlington, uh, Saginaw and the DFW area are, are city examples that are at 100%. Just showing some of the, the other communities that adopted it, uh, recently. So, um, happy to try and answer any questions, but I think y'all got most of the details last meeting and this was just y'all's direction to bring, uh, ideas back and what the, the impact might be.
Yeah, thank you, deputy. I think, um, what, what we can kind of cut to the chase on this deal is I'm in favor of 100%. Is any of council looking at something different than that?
No. The only question I had was if y'all figured out Randall County?
They have not taken action at this point as far as I know.
Council, I would, I'd, I'd like to see us move this forward at 100% abatement for that. And I think it'll show good leadership for the other, uh, taxing entities.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8183, uh, at 100%.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I get who, who was the second?
Second was from Councilman Simpson.
Thank you.
He's, he's the one that interrupted.
We just hurry up, make your ordinance.
Just getting you there.
Item nine C, um, Cashin, are you up on this one?
I'm super excited about this, so I'm going to keep to my slides and I'll let y'all dig in with questions. I won't go into all my vision and all my thoughts over the last two years and, but I am excited that we are to this point. We have been discussing a long-term master plan, um, as we have kind of rebuilt coming out of COVID, rebuilt our finances, rebuilt our staff. We are sitting on a little bit of reserves. I don't want to just sit on those, but I also want to make sure that we are investing them in the best place for growth that we can find. Uh, I'd like some experts to come in and give us some, some good research and, and guide some good conversations in the community. So what we did, our objective to develop a 20-year plan to guide tourism growth in Amarillo. Focus areas are going to be enhancing existing assets. What do we have? How do we enhance that? How do we package it, market, get it out better? How do we attract new visitors? To me, this is how do we create the destination traveler? We spend a lot of our marketing dollars in our feeder markets, but those feeder markets are passed through traffic. So it's a gamble sometimes to take those dollars and go into a new market and try and attract new visitors. So this would also give us the research that would allow us to do these things with confidence and set some goals that we could know that we're on a roadmap and hitting, you know, the mark and, and the growth the way that we need to. And it keeps us on track as our board members change and staff changes. Our yearly strategic plans would speak back to these goals. Sustainable growth, economic impact and community benefits. We always want to make sure that we're considering the community benefits, um, not just the economic impact and the visitor experience. What are our communities' experience with, with what we're doing within the community? Enhance visitor experience while improving quality of life for residents. So we issued an RFP, um, on October 1st, 2024. The due date was November 4th, 2024. We did that through website posting, so social media callouts. We did direct outreach to eight different firms, which we had referrals from other Texas cities on. We had response from two and also a no bid. So this had our three response requirement. CSL, JLL are the two that, uh, submitted and we had a board decision on January 22nd, 2025. The board decided to go with JLL. That, uh, proposal was in the packet as well. The qualifications, global tourism strategy team with experience in 100-plus destinations. They actually offered a larger team. They have five Texas offices, um, so I feel like they're much more familiar in looking through their proposal and some of their past work, much more familiar with Texas legislation around hot tax, those kind of things. Proven success with cities like Louisville, Columbus and Denver. Proprietary, uh, tools, Tourism Readiness Index, Demand Driver Scorecard, Event Matrix. These are all things that are speaking to the research that goes along with tourism. That's going to give us some of those insights to, to really be able to make good informed decisions, to be able to move us, uh, forward. Focus on data-driven implementation strategies. Has completed numerous strategic plans for cities around Texas. So they did not have quite the experience on, um, long-term plans with cities, but they have done many, many strategic plans within Texas. Their long-term plans lied more, um, in districts, uh, things like that. We actually liked that when comparing them to the other, uh, company because the other company was very facility focused. We've heard the community in 2018 and 2020. We've really, really changed our thinking in the office. When we get a facility, which I firmly believe that we need facility growth, whatever that be, we need a place to have these people if we're really going to draw in meetings and big groups. But right now, the reality is leisure is where we're going to see growth. So that's where our focus is. So we liked JLL, um, and their approach on things and the fact that they have that type of experience within the districts that they were looking at. It really was about creating one-off traffic, not necessarily, you know, facility development for, for the, the group growth. Has five offices in Texas and it's familiar with our, I've already said that one, with our legislation around the hotel occupancy tax. Their approach is data-driven, decision marketing, uh, making advanced analytics for tourism strategy. The event matrix is experienced in optimizing events for increased visitation. Stakeholder engagement, census building with, uh, government, business and community. It's vital to us that we bring in some community members that we're working through this process. We've got a lot of committees at our office. They are all partner-focused. So we stay within our own house a lot of times, you know, and that's why we've got the three roles on our board that are open citizen, uh, seats. Those are vital to us. They're kind of our visitor input, you know, there are people outside of our industry. So that's going to be a, a key part of this process is really getting some community in. And then of course, the stakeholders, the city and the counties, you know, some representation from, from as many areas as we can get into the conversation. Proven implementation strategy. So they've got clear milestones, action steps and post-project support. Cost comparisons. We actually went through the discussions with our board without giving them the cost. We blacked out how much they were because there was such a big difference. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't clouding the comparisons between the two. JLL comes in at 75,000, CSL comes in at 157,000. Now JLL does have additional customizations, uh, available. So I am requesting a, a hundred thousand dollars in reserve so that we already have 25,000, um, to be able to get some extra research if we find the need for it as we get down the line. CSL at 157,000 plus, they still would charge for travel. They don't have the Texas offices. What I really think, uh, looking at this, the difference, we had to go back and forth and really dug into, uh, and had some questions for both of them without giving away, you know, the pricing of the other company. But JLL owns research. So that's where I think the biggest part of why their pricing is so different. So JLL actually owns hotel research, which is another thing that is important to me. My hotels trust their numbers, they trust their information. So where they own that, CSL would actually have to purchase research, possibly even from JLL, to get us the information we need to be able to move forward. So that was, um, what the conclusion that we came to, um, on why that was such a, a big number discrepancy between the two bids. So I've said a few of these, but we chose them because they've got a larger project team, experience working in Texas highlights, um, experience with long-term plans for arts venues, events, again, things that really are speaking to where we want ahead with our planning, where we expect ahead. We're not going into this with, uh, with any set ideas. We really want the feedback and the guidance. Speaks to market penetration, leisure and leisure strategies. Focuses on stakeholder engagement, key for us. Experienced in optimizing events and, um, we need to make sure that our events, uh, as a staff of 10 who also have to be on the road selling and servicing what comes in, we can't just have events all year long. So if we're going to have things like the Route 66 Festival, we've just taken over the Film Festival, we've got room for one more event. That needs to really generate some revenue for us and it has to be big in visitation, something that really attracts. They own the data and they're trusted in Texas travel circles, um, and then of course, the cost. Do y'all have any questions? I ran through that very fast. But I will say our, our, you know, we're, we had a mindset change after some of the distress, disruption that happened with our budget. We really sat down at the time as a staff of five, um, and said, you know, how, how do we move forward? How do we rebuild? We don't want to just build back to what we are. That was one of the reasons that we completely restructured our mission. We've been doing in-house yearly strategic plans, basically because for the first few years, we couldn't afford to have somebody come in and guide a strategic plan. After we did that for a couple of years, looking at ours as compared to what a lot of companies bring, uh, to the table, we actually like the way that ours work. It sets goals that we can almost check off as we move through the year. We've trained ourselves to really be on top of that, utilize the strategic plan. So we've continued to do that because we know that once we get a long-term plan in place, that will guide how we set our yearly goals and set the, the yearly, uh, strategic plans.
Questions, council?
Any questions on anything?
The only question I have is on the resolution. It was asking to amend the 2324 budget. Is that accurate?
I don't have the resolution in front of me. No.
We can update that.
This is out of this year's budget. So it all, and I put, should have put a slide in on this. So, um, we have a restricted, um, we've got $700,000 in reserve that is restricted by policy. Basically a quarter, our board sets that every year, kind of looks at where we're at because we have a fluctuating budget. Got that. And outside of that, we have, I believe about a 1.3 million dollars, um, in reserves that we sit on. We've got some more reserves that we stay ahead of the curve on, so we're working off of cash and off the projections of the hot tax. So technically the reserves, because they're already in the bank, but really there are operational dollars. So, um, we've got 1.3 million dollars that we really can touch and, and, and move with. My big thing with, with the master plan is it's a tax that is meant to create activity. I don't want to just always sit on reserves, but I also want to be a very good steward of how we use them. So I want to make sure that what we use them for and, and when we choose to make an investment, whether that be a visitor center or owning our own offices or whatever the plan says would make sense and help us grow, that it really has legs to it and we've thought it out long-term. So we don't want to do anything like that until we've got this kind of input, this kind of plan in place. But we've got the dollars, we're very healthy financially, we're ready to have the discussion on how to spend those reserves and what a good investment for us would look like.
Real good.
Councilmember Craft, to your question, I see it in one of the whereas statements. Down in section one, it's listed as the 2425. And so we'll just adjust that whereas statement and we can do that administratively.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Smith?
Nope, none for me.
Okay, let's ask for a motion on item nine C, please.
I move to approve resolution number two dash 25 dash 25 dash five.
Second. Motion and a second from the right side. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Item nine D, Mr. Brassfield, if you'll come up here and talk about our Takovus. Item 9D, Mr. Brassfield, if you'll come up here and talk about our Tacovus opportunity.
Good evening, gentlemen. This item considers a resolution to support, a resolution of support for the Wodah Cooper Development Incorporated, 9% housing tax credit application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for a tax credit new construction project known as Tacovus Terrace. So for the benefit of the public, a little bit of background on the housing tax credit program. This federal program is administered by the Department of Housing and Community Affairs here in Texas, directs private capital towards the development and preservation of affordable rental housing for low-income households. Tax credits are awarded on a dollar-for-dollar basis to offset a portion of the federal tax liability in exchange for the production or preservation of affordable rental housing. And the value of the tax credits are what allow for the rent to be offered at the below-market rate. There's two types of tax credits offered here in Texas, the 9% competitive and the 4% non-competitive. So this program was designed to provide a source of equity financing and development of affordable housing. It maximizes the number of affordable units added to the state's housing supply, ensures that the state's affordable housing supply is well-maintained and operated, serving as a credit for the communities where these properties are located, prevents the loss of the state's supply of affordable housing. And the reason these companies come to city councils for these pass-through resolutions is it helps improve their scoring when they submit it to the state. And so in this scenario, they will receive 17 points if the council passes the resolution, and they will receive an additional point for receiving the requested fee waiver as part of this resolution. So the company is Wodah Cooper Development, and their project is Tacovus Terrace. This $22 million proposed project would be located at 1601 Southeast 28th, which would be between Wilson and Aldridge Streets there in the south end of the Barrio Neighborhood Plan Area. It's currently six acres of undeveloped vacant land, and they are proposing to construct a three-story, 80-unit garden-style complex. The project, they're targeting 30% to 60% of the area median family income for their tenants. The project has received several letters of support. You've heard from a couple of those today, the Neighborhood Planning Committee and Amarillo ISD. And the project will add to the city's tax rule. They are not seeking any tax exemptions through this And here are a couple of examples of projects that they've done in West Virginia and Michigan. In the previous slide, that's the architectural rendering of what they're proposing to build here in Amarillo. So in the time that we've gotten to know the folks at Wodah Cooper, we've had an opportunity to visit with them extensively about this project. And to recap, what they are requesting is a resolution of support, and within that resolution is a request for a waiver of $500 of the development fees associated with this project. Staff feels that this project would add additional affordable housing options to the southeast quadrant of Amarillo. It does meet the city's comprehensive plan goal of diversifying Amarillo's housing stock, which includes well-maintained affordable rental houses or rental units. It does further the Barrio Neighborhood Plan goals of improving aesthetics of residential areas, maximizing neighborhood appeal, and attracting new development. The proposed use is consistent with how the area is currently zoned as heavy commercial, and the project would place undeveloped property into positive use and add to the city's tax rule. And overall, staff does recommend approval of this request. Wodah Cooper has sent a team of folks here. If you have any questions specific to the project, I'm sure they would be happy to come up and answer those. Otherwise, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Council?
The only question I have is, outside of this, are they going to have any more requests as far as any sort of tax abatements or anything?
To my knowledge, no. This is the only request being made.
Okay. And then the $500, that's for the full permit?
I don't think that's going to cover the full permit. They just needed the $500 to get that extra point. That's something that could easily be filled in through our Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Program.
Any issue with that $500, Councilman? No. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Would ask for a motion on Item 9D. Thank you, Mr. Brassfield.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 02-25-25-6 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second on Item 9D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Appreciate you, gentlemen, for being here. Thank you. Item 9E, Mr. Zimmerman, we're going to have you come up. You don't have to give a presentation. We just want to be able to ask a few questions on this one. We are familiar with the 250 Ask. And so I know that Councilman Sherland had to ask a few questions, so I think if we can just skip straight to maybe the security camera piece and then also potentially the metal detector. Do you, Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Zimmerman on either of those two items?
The only thing I had was on the cameras. Were those not pre-wired during construction? Do you know?
Partly.
Partly?
Partly.
Correct, Jerry.
Partly. But ASI was also going to donate a lot of wire to the project.
Okay. So the Ask is still to purchase the cameras, not going to do a lease?
Yes. ASI does not do a lease, and we got such a great deal on these cameras. Matter of fact, the former church that I worked with, we got a better deal than they did on the cameras. So by putting all four properties that we will have into the future, including the New Day Center that will be forthcoming, we got a really great deal. They really wanted to be a part of this project.
Okay.
The camera manufacturer.
Any other questions?
Just refresh me. Is this a one-time 250 or revolving?
It's a one-time 250, correct?
Yes. And I sent you the breakdown. Or did they get it?
Yeah, it was the one-time 250, and I think y'all requested that he'd come back during normal budget process if there was ever a future need.
Right. Give us a quick update on the cabin community that you've gotten built. What's your projected open date now? You know, how are you looking over there?
It's looking really, really good. The cabins have arrived. We assembled all but four. We even worked through a snowstorm last Saturday that was not in the forecast until Saturday, so we had to factor that in. But from what I understand, from Pallet, it's the fastest deployment they've ever had in their history. So pretty proud about that, that we got all but four done. They still need to be trimmed out and anchored to the concrete, but they're here and they're going up. From what I understand, the CO is supposed to arrive around the 5th of April, and we have done, we have planned on the 12th of April to do the ribbon cutting, just in case there's a little snag there. And with a couple of dinners beforehand. And then we're probably going to wait till that next Wednesday, like the 14th, I think, to bring in the first cabin residence. We've met with Jason Riddlesberger's team pretty much every week. We're coming up with a contract and an assessment for those residents, and we will start with them. And then a few weeks later, we will open the safe space, is our working plan right now.
Love it.
Baby step it, sorry.
No, sorry. My last question would be, how many meals are you feeding every week right now?
Monthly, we're, monthly, we're at about $15,500.
$15,500 meals monthly.
And we will go to three meals at Transformation Park once it opens, which right now, that's just one meal, five days a week. That's lunch. And then some others that we send out to other nonprofits. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're looking forward to the impact in the community over there. We know it's needed.
Yes.
Anything else you have to add on this item?
No. I just hope you got the information you needed to make the decision.
Okay. Council, if you're ready, would entertain a motion on 9E.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 0225257.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Zimmerman, thank you for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Item 9F, we've got some bylaws that were a little ways coming. So Mr. Nelson, thank you for coming up here. Honestly, I'm not sure that we need much from you. We have two council members that serve on your board. The rest of us have been working on this for months. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Not asking for a presentation, but maybe just a summary of your support for the way these turned out. And then also, Mr. Atkins, everybody still good with everything you've got formulated?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So our board did review the revision that is in your packet. Basically, it's all on Page 9. We cleaned up a little language, took out some redundant information, and it's, besides that, it's exactly what y'all approved last time.
Great. Councilman Kraft, or Tips, anything to add to this? I know you guys had a hand in making sure everything got done.
Well, like you said, the only change was removing words that were the same in the same article, so.
Okay. All good?
All good.
Okay. Mr. Nelson, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Ready for a motion on 9F, gentlemen?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2-25-25-8.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On to Item 9G. Mr. Nelson, updated letter here.
Yes, sir. This is Amendment Number 2 to the Location and Incentive Agreement with Producer Own Beef Opco LLC. Basically, this agreement, this amendment pushes dates in our location incentive agreement out by two years. These dates now match the dates with the city's agreement with Producer Own Beef. So we're, we were asked to match those dates. So basically, the big date that pushes out two years would be the occupancy of the facility and the start of the business. All the other performance measure dates are also pushed by two years, so they have additional time to create those jobs and then perform under our agreement.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Any questions?
No, sir. Appreciate you, Doug.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no questions. I think just maybe a statement from me on this. POB, Producer's Own Beef, is exactly the type of industry that we do want to promote, push for, and support through our EDC. And so as council, it is everything that has to do with the resources that we naturally have here, I-27, I-40, all of the cattle producers around here, and then supporting that good ag industry, but also local business. So this is a contrast, I think, to what we walked through a few weeks ago with a different extension that we weren't willing to give. So we want this company and this, we want this venture to understand that, you know, regardless of what it looks like or how it feels, we're 100% behind you. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Motion on Item 9G, please.
Move to approve Item 9G as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 9H. Mr. Kishuba, are you back up on this guy?
Mayor and Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Rec. The item before you is a renewal of our, one of our landscape maintenance contracts. You can kind of see the information outlined in your agenda. What this is, is it's a turnkey landscape maintenance for regional parks, school parks, community parks, and undeveloped properties. You can see what it includes, things like turf arification, ground cover edging, pre-emergent fertilizer, all of those landscape maintenance items. Again, I kind of touched on it. So this one includes our regional parks, our school parks, our community parks, and our undeveloped property. We have had two changer overs, or change orders over the course of this agreement, Change Order 1, Change Order 2. The original contract was a one-year contract with the ability for six additional one-year renewals. This is the third renewal, so there would be three additional one-year periods if agreeable by both parties. In terms of maintenance, this is what the frequency is. So between March 1 and March 31st, bi-weekly mowing. When we get into the growing season, April 1 to September, they're mowing weekly. And then as we kind of come out of growing season, it throttles back. And then over the winter, it's just extra mows as needed. The undeveloped property, those are those large areas, like around McDonald Lake, things like that, that we just mow as, kind of as needed. Just to touch on some of those other contracts that we have, just as a reminder to council, we do have another landscape maintenance contract. That covers those other properties, so neighborhood parks, linear parks, public buildings, traffic islands, and other miscellaneous city-owned properties. We have our electrical contract. We have our forestry contract, and we also have our concrete contract. So we're asking council to consider the renewal of this. The total amount over four years would be $9,293,152.24.
Questions, guys?
Has the contract increased since last year?
No, it has not.
Mr. Kishuba, this always comes up. So tell me, how many employees do you have over there right now?
I believe we're at about 133. On park maintenance side, we're only 49. That was something that we did a few years ago, kind of after COVID. We had a hard time finding employees. We were looking for full-time, part-time, seasonal contracts. We couldn't, we couldn't find employees. And so that's where this model of contracting out a lot of our activities came from.
I think a large part of the population would think that most of your employees just weed, eat, and mow all week, every week, and that that's really your job in parks and maintenance, because I don't think they understand the fullness of everything you do. So tell me, with those positions that we didn't refill, in order to take care of a lot of the maintenance that we are now subcontracting, tell me just a little bit about what your employees are doing, you know, week in, week out, throughout the summers, spring, fall, to give us a little bit of an idea for those 49.
Yeah, absolutely. We have crews that are literally going around doing litter out all the time. We've got one individual, that's all she does is graffiti and vandalism, addressing all of those issues. We do have irrigation still in-house. We do have our contract management, so all of these contracts, making sure somebody's going around and double-checking all of this. We have internal projects, so we've got some people that go fix things, whether it's restrooms, whether it's other facilities. So our staff stays very busy. Mowing is a part of that, obviously, but there's a lot of things that staff is doing on a day-to-day basis that most people don't recognize.
Thank you for that. Council, any further questions for Mr. Kishuba?
I move to renew the landscape maintenance contract as presented.
Second.
Item 9H has a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are we down to our last one, our last item here in our new home? Item 9I, Mr. Hooper.
Thank you so much. This is the Georgia Street Reconstruction Project. This has been a long time coming. We were talking in our previous presentation about time it takes to put a project, shoot, or make a project shovel-ready. Well, this is certainly one of those. The design for this has taken quite a while. I have Jerry, Kyle, and Alan here, if there's any questions that come up at the end of this about that design or anything that we're working on. The background on this project is that this is a continuation of Georgia Street from Hollywood to Burke Lane. It's about a mile and a half long. This is pavement widening from a two-lane arterial to a five-lane. It also includes storm drain, construction, utility relocations, a lot of excavation. This is all funded through Prop 1 Street Bonds, street funding, drainage funding, and Economic Development Authority (EDA) grant. So there's a lot of different funding sources going towards this one. Here's the project location. You can see the map on the left that kind of highlights that in relation to Amarillo itself. Then you can see the one on the right that just shows that strip through there that goes through just past City View and down into that industrial area as well. It's close to the Loop there. So heavily traveled road for sure right now, and the five lanes will be very beneficial. This is just a street view that I took just to show the difference between a five-lane and a two-lane. The two-lane there on the left is south of Burke Lane. That's the area that's going to be turned into a five-lane. And then that's north of Burke Lane, where you can see what that actually looks like with the strip. And there's no center medians. The sidewalks, very limited, only in the places where we would meet minimum requirements for ADA. And we've really taken this project and value-engineered it down to just look basically like what you see on the right, right there. Project construction, just, I wanted to put this out there because this is a drawing- Project construction, just, I wanted to put this out there because this is a drawing that Kyle and him, a section of this roadway. You can see the dotted line that runs through that center line of the roadway. That's how much excavation is going to take place. Just the flat part of that, at the top of that dash line, is actually the existing roadway. There's a lot of excavation that has to come out of there. There's a lot of work that has to occur with utilities. You can see that underneath there. It's a multi-phase project, and one of the things I want to point out on this, there's a three-and-a-half-year construction timeline on this. Lot of reasons for that. A lot of it is the excavation, a lot of it is the 11 proposed traffic configurations. That means 11 different times during this project, we're going to have to reroute traffic to keep that roadway open so that we can continue with the construction. So will it be something that is a pain point for citizens that travel or are in that area? Absolutely. And I think we need to think about that ahead of time and know that that's going to be an inconvenience, but that always comes with growth, and there's nothing that you can really do about that. I think that the proposed traffic configurations are going to be the most challenging of that and making sure that we can keep traffic moving out there. We had an RFP for this, the selection criteria. Just wanted to run through that real quick, and I think you're pretty familiar with our process on this. We consider a lot of things when it comes to RFPs. One of them is the price, of course. That weighs heavily on these. Construction time is also considered as well. And then we want to look at the qualifications, reputation, product quality, past relationships with these contractors, their capacity to do the work, their promptness, personnel, a lot of other things that's in that RFP. Also, evaluations by committee are done by a committee, and there, it's independent of price and time. They don't have conversations with each other. Just so you know how that process works, they all independently review the RFPs, submit their things to purchasing. Purchasing sends out the final score for that, and that's how those are scored and then awarded, or at least presented for award. So the proposal process generates a recommendation to the highest evaluated bidder. In this case, L.A. Fullerton Sons, local contractor, was the one that we're recommending for the bid. They had a base bid of 27,3642. And by the way, that was the lowest price, which helped them on their scoring. They submitted 1,280 calendar days, which is three and a half years. There's an alternate bid in there as well for $87,105. That's a separate, that's for the illumination, if we put street lighting in, and eventually, I think, we would have to at least consider that. That's just basically for the infrastructure to get it there. There's a separate future commitment that we would have to make to Excel Energy at some point in time if we decided to do the illumination. Right now, that price is about $600,000 to fully light that corridor. A motion would be required to exclude or include that alternate bid of 87,105, not the 600, just the 87,105 to put the infrastructure in place now. And the reason I say it's a wise decision to do that is because if we ever go back in the future, a couple of years from now, five years from now, and say, hey, we have to put street lighting in, and we have to start tearing out infrastructure, that gets very expensive very fast. Those are very good prices that we see right now for both of those items. So our recommendation would be to award this to L.A. Fullerton Sons, including the alternate bid, the amount of $27,387,747.90. If you've got questions, we can try to get them answered.
Donnie, do we usually have the other bids in there? Or is this different? I mean, typically, don't we have the RFP? Like, on an RFP, we've got them all?
I'm having a hard time understanding your microphones again. I'm probably just as hard as hearing as James is.
Yeah, well, my wife's having a hard time too, so.
Are you talking about the score sheet in the agenda packet?
Not necessarily the score sheet. Is it in the agenda packet?
That's usually, I don't know if it's in for this, on the ranking of the other bids?
It is not.
Yeah.
And it's fine. It's just a question. I mean, typically, because that's what we'd ask for, not just on this, but...
Oh, you wanting to see that?
Yeah, I think typically, we have showed all bidders in the ranking. Right. And I don't have to see it this time. I'm just curious as to why it wasn't there, so.
Sure.
Okay. So the answer is yes, it typically is, Andrew?
Yes, that's correct.
Typically, we do.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Yeah.
I mean, my only question would be, is on that $600,000 with Excel, I mean, with all the economic development projects going on on Georgia Street, would that be a possible project?
The $600,000 for the illumination?
Yeah.
So that would be something that would happen after the project is awarded. It would be something completely separate that we'd work out with Excel Energy. Don't have a funding source currently for that.
Well, that's what I was asking, is with all the industrial stuff going on over there on Georgia Street, in the future, a possibility with working with the EDC, is that something that they could possibly fund?
I would say it's probably a possibility. I may pass that off as well, but...
Yeah, I think it could be something to discuss with them, particularly aligning the frontage of their business park. I think legally, I believe they could participate in that.
Okay.
You have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Counselman? Okay. Donnie, thank you for this. Let me ask just a few things. The breakdown in the funding, can you give me generalities on the $27 million? How much of it's coming from drainage? How much of it's coming from our $35 million note?
I probably can't, but I've got people that may can, and his name's Kyle Sneeter-John, that can come up here and bring his calculator with him and do that. You can even use the other podium, Kyle. We have two of them now, yeah.
A good overview, Mr. Sneeter-John?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So in general, the breakdown, there's about $17 million of this that is just strictly the paving portion. And then, so there's about a million dollars, million and a half that are the, and I'm sorry, I'm reading off this chart, so that's why I'm speaking really slowly, sorry. About $17 million in the paving piece. There's about a million, million and a half in the utility and utility extension, and then that leaves us approximately 10 in the storm drain.
So drainage fund is roughly 10 million? Because where did this project start out? Was it north of $30 million at one time? You know, where were you before you value engineered this?
Yeah, so, yes, we've looked at all kinds of options, and we've, you know, we had full sidewalks, we had full lighting, we had all of the other stuff, but in general, yeah, it has been as high as 30, 35 million. We've looked at other opportunities, looked at good opportunities to scale the project down, but in general, we had point A to point B that have to be completed. And then likewise, we're in a flood zone, we're in, you know, that is a heavily traveled corridor that has flood considerations. And so the storm drain piece is big, physically big, as well as kind of intricate, and how we get those things installed underneath an existing roadway, maintain access to those private businesses and private parties all the way along that mile and a half. And then likewise, you know, sometimes as much as three feet difference between where the existing road is now and where the proposed road is going to be, phasing that through those sections to keep the road open.
Okay. Very good. So I just wanted a little bit of the breakdown on the monies. Already been value engineered, so we lost the sidewalks on both sides? We lost one side? Anything that you can expand on, on that design?
Absolutely. So basically, we are meeting the minimum ADA criteria that we're required to construct due to the code. And so what that means is that we're constructing sidewalk adjacent to established residential areas, established, pre-developed areas, and we are assuming that the sidewalk will be required of future development as it's installed. And our goal, from our perspective, that actually worked well, is that in general, we've got sidewalk down one side of the arterial, and it's, even that is intermittent, because there are some gaps relative to areas that have not yet been developed.
Okay. The point of the questioning is just to go to, like, we have value engineered this, and we are stretching a dollar, because we have other streets we're trying to get to around town, so it all matters. Every million dollars matters, even though this is a $27 million bid. So my only other question is, like, Osage. I know we're going to get the question of, okay, Georgia is here, thank you, we appreciate this, but then when will Osage happen? And so like, that one is in planning, Kyle? Do you know anything about when and when our public could expect that?
Yes, sir. So we currently have a, we currently have a contract with Kinley Horn Engineering for the design of Osage, but that's the stage that we're in. We're in the planning and design phase for that arterial, which is probably the next large reconstruction project. There are lots of other smaller, you know, maintenance-type projects, and we talked about the distinction between those two in our last presentation. But we're in the design phase of Osage, we're in the design phase of Colter, south of the Loop, we're in the design phase of 34th from San Citi to...
Helium?
Helium, thank you.
Right.
And so there are, yeah, there are multiple in the queue.
Well, Mr. Sherlin's not with us here today, and so he is recovering well, and we're expecting him back at the next council meeting. In true Tom Sherlin fashion, like, he likes to get down to the very last $1,000, and I would just like to recommend to council, you guys have cut on this and value engineered it and worked it and worked it in order to get all the way to where you're before us asking for an $87,000 alternate. That ought to show a lot to us, and you guys saying, well, if you don't want to put the infrastructure in, we can tear it up later. But I would like to recommend to council that we move to put the $87,000 in, and we appreciate staff's diligence on working this thing to the most affordable budget that we have. And so I think that's it for me on the questions. Counsel, do you guys have anything further?
No, I would just recommend also, on that $600,000, that commitment to Excel, I would reach out and see what possibilities there are in the future with the EDC on that one.
Good. Okay. Ask for a motion on item 9I.
I move we award the Georgia Street Reconstruction Project as presented, including the alternate bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm going to ask for one more. We're about to wrap up our final meeting, so would like it if counsel would, motion and a second to adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, guys, for coming. You're adjourned.